We can all stand for the pledge? Mr. Naum, can you lead us to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have moment's silence for the men and women in the armed forces. Thank you.
Yeah, they didn't go very silent.
Do we have the oath of pledge? Leah?
Hi, good evening. I am here to express my appreciation for the intent by Dakota Partners to purchase and develop the East Street property, which is, would be a boon for our community. I hope you pay attention. We need this, the program that Dakota Partners follows, and it's on their website. They've got a fabulous record. They've done some excellent work right here in town. The historical preservation group has worked with them and awarded them for their excellent work in reclaiming the Barton House as it was intended initially before all the additions. And we need this kind of an investment in our community. And it just will help the downtown, and it'll certainly bring in immediate revenue to our coffers, which we need, and for years to come, a great deal of tax money. So please give them your best interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold my glasses up high again. 121 Great Brook Road. It said, "Who's on 121 Great Brook Road? Come on down." I cannot read your handwriting. Please do, my woman. This is the old one. Then you're next.
All right, evening. Christopher Ann Jones, 121 Great Brook Road. Muffer. This is a proposal by the individuals that own property that join a paper road, what the town calls a paper road, which is actually not a paper road, it's actual property, that goes from the end of Great Brook Road, which is on top of the mountain on 109, in case anybody doesn't know where the area is, and continues all the way down to Hickock Road. At this time, at the end of the cul-de-sac, it ends, and then the paper road picks up from there and follows down the mountain. The individuals that own property, while he's down the mountain, have a, are looking for a discontinuance of this road, and actually to be turned over to them. This road, paper road, has not been maintained by the town in 40 years, so it hasn't cost the town anything, leaving it the way it is. Most of the residents on this road, we've all raised our kids there, it's been a peaceful neighborhood, are opposing this road to go through, for a handful of reasons. We have, there's one department, there's been a couple attempts of putting this road through, and our fear here is that if these individuals want the discontinuance of this road, that they will most likely take the road from the cul-de-sac and bring it straight through the property, down to the other end. They attempted to do this back a few years ago. They attained a permit, which I believe under false pretenses, and skirted, they said they were landlocked out of their property. They were already accessing their property from the other side, which is down the hill. Within 24 hours, they came up, they ripped the guardrails down the end of the cul-de-sac and put a skirting there. We were able to have that ceased, and they stopped. The guardrail was still down. Two weeks later, a bunch of kids came down the road, thought it was a continuing straight through, and got in a bad accident, totaled the car. Thank God nobody got, you know, severely injured. We have concerns here on how this road is being granted, if it was granted to them, on what their intentions are to do with this, which nobody knows, I talked to the engineer today, what they plan on doing if they do obtain this road. We have, where this skirting was put by these individuals a few years back, there's, now there's all erosion on that mountain where there wasn't before, which we have pictures We have a problem because we've heard that it's, they want to use it for agricultural reasons, and they've had their taxes decreased for this reason. They have conveyed that they have a carrot farm in Bethel. After investigating, there's no place that exists. And the reason I'm bringing this all up is because there's a little problem here with what we've been told and what we've heard that hasn't checked out. So, bottom line, we're very skeptical on how these individuals have worked in the past. We believe that this intent, this road being abandoned to them, that again, the town hasn't had to put any money into in 40 years, will be more than just abandoning this road to them.
Chris, can I have another minute, please?
Okay. So, that's where we sit. We have many neighbors on the road here, and I believe they're, they all feel that I feel, the way that my wife and I feel. And we all, there's a handful of houses down there that all but this road, too. So again, abandoning the road to them, we have no idea what their intentions are. And to just follow that up, they had built the driveway also down the end of the cul-de-sac, which they can access their property into now, and that was done last year. So there is already an access for them to get to their property from both ways, the bottom of the hill and the top of the hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. I got 97 Great Brook, Andrea and Rob.
Good evening. Just to follow up on what Chris said.
Did you say your name?
Robert D. Michelle, 97 Great Brook. To follow up on what Chris was saying, the issue here is not necessarily removing the paper road, but the issue is why? What are their plans? What are they going to do with it? They've been shady in the past, like we said. There are aerial photographs of backhoes that did remove Reservoir, too, and I understand they aren't allowed to do that because it's their property, not a lake or a pond. But just so many things have just been done without coming to the town, you know, to do any of their work, and it's just, it's just a scary situation. If we knew what they were doing, this might be a little bit easier to accept, but we don't. So that's, I think, part of our big concern, is what are they planning? You know, or what are they planning not to tell us, you know, when they're going to do? So that's the scary part for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Andrea Walker.
My name's Andrea Deesha. I'm married to him, so I live on the same street. I'm concerned because over the years, this gentleman had a gigantic pickup truck that kept going back and forth, filling this horrible degrees of, I mean, you don't even want to walk down there, let alone have a driveway down there. And I think the reason we're getting Great Brook paved is probably because of those down trucks. And after we get Great Brook paved, which is happening right now, they're going to destroy the land again, or the streets again. There's an issue as far as if somebody was to get hurt, and there isn't, there was a guardrail prior to this, what, whose liability is it? Is it the town if somebody was to get hurt there because the guardrail was taken up? Also, it's a cul-de-sac. People sell their homes listing it's a cul-de-sac. If that road is opened up, it's no longer a cul-de-sac, and that would depreciate home value. I don't understand what, what the reason is. One day, there was a sign up that said partial discontinuation of this road. It was way down on the bottom of the street, so those of us who don't, and it's a half a mile road, if we don't go down to the bottom of the hill, we wouldn't even have seen the sign. Most, most people didn't see the signs. Neighbors took pictures, and we put flyers in everybody's mailbox. I believe the sign should have been on the top of the road so that everybody on the road could have seen the sign. So that was a disadvantage to people who lived there, and they probably would have been more of a turnout. We don't know anything other than the fact that they want to partially discontinue a road. And I think as neighbors, shouldn't we have the right to know why they want to partially discontinue the road? That's my question. Then we would have all bunch of questions. Thank you.
Thank you. 140 Great Brook. Tom, Dan.
Hi, I'm Dean Dagno. I'm, I'm actually, my neighbor John Daudlin and myself, we are the two applicants that requested that this small section of the Great Brook Road, Paper Road be abandoned. And I blew up a map that shows my property and my neighbor John, it's roughly the square, the square property that's highlighted. As you can see, highlighted in green is the existing improved town roads. The highlighted area is my property and my neighbor John Daudlin's property. The area in pink is the area which is the paper road that is impassable, it's a washed-out gully, it's very steep, and it's very difficult to actually walk down that right-of-way. What happens is that people end up walking on our private properties. Not only walking, they drive their motorcycles and quads from up at the cul-de-sac area down through, and because they can't stay on that town right-of-way, they end up meandering off to either side on the trails that are existing on our private properties. I've been a taxpayer in New Milford for over 24 years, and my neighbor John Daudlin for longer than that. John Daudlin, he's building a new house on his property, and I have about 30 acres of land, 25 of which are in agricultural and forestry farming-type use. The other five acres are residential. And I have a driveway, which I took a permit out for, the driveway, number 140 Great Brook Road, which is, as you're coming down Great Brook Road, it's the lot to the right-hand side, says Lot Number 10. I believe it's Number 10. It's this lot right here, yeah? I, as I say, my property surrounds both sides of this old town road and John Daudlin's as well. My family and I are planning, in the planning stages, to possibly build one or two houses on this property. The lot, the number 140 Great Brook Road, is already an approved building lot. So, I'm a farmer, and that's, my intentions are to do farming on my land. As I say, other than building the two houses possibly, anything that goes on on my property is just farm-wise. I have two big gardens, and I do all kinds of farming, and I have a portable bandsaw mill. I take some from my resources on the property, and I make boards. My family and I, we camp out on it, and we hunt on our land. We are not developers, and during my lifetime, there will not be any development of the rest of my land. We want to see this discontinuance of that one section of road, because it makes sense on paper. If you look at it, Great Brook Road has an existing turnaround, and below, there's four property owners that access the lower section, which is called Great Brook Lane. And in between is this section of unimproved road, which, it really should be made private. The town shouldn't, the town doesn't need it, and it's, it would be less of a liability for the town and for ourselves if this was privatized, you know, discontinued. It could go back on the tax rolls, and I am not a developer, and I'd never want to see that road ever go through or connect, and it never will. The only, the only driveway, the only driveway that will be from Great Brook Road to turnaround is for the approved building lot, which I have, number 140 Great Brook Road. And there's an accessway, which I have to make access to this land, the land on the other side of this, this large piece of land here. There's about 400 foot of elevation change, so that's why I have an access from the upper section, and I have access to the bottom section.
Dan, you have another minute, please?
Thank you. So, I thank you for your considering this request, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Janet, 121 Great Brook Road, please.
There's just a few things, and my concern is...
Can I get your name, please?
Pardon? Oh, Janet Ann Jones, 121 Great Brook Road. Okay. Is, first of all, the mention of quads and motorcycles going down there has no longer existed for years since he bought the property, because he moved boulders and big, large trees to block that, so that has not happened. I've lived there 20 years, and it hasn't happened for a good 15 years. So that does not exist, it does not happen on our street. Our property butts up to the road, the paper road, and our concern is what are our rights on 121 Great Brook Road? I mean, we'd like to know where we stand. He wants it dissolved, what about us? Do we have a right to have an opinion, or maybe work something out with the town so that we still have a little bit of an easement that goes along so we're not landlocked on our property, property that butts up against that road? That's our question. And, and if you guys, if the town decides to go ahead and abandon the road, where do we stand legally that nobody else can turn around and end up using that road to develop property? We want to know what happens at that point. Something stated legally to keep that from happening, so that if we see that development is going on and they are using that road, I mean, we have a lot of questions that we just don't have any answers to. And, and if they're not going to use it, why bother, bother to abandoning it? It's been fine all along. So why are we going to this point? That's, you know, just more questions that we would like to have answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. William Zangara, 130 Great Brook Road.
Hi, I'm speaking on behalf of William Zangara.
You don't look like William.
No, I'm not William. I'm Florida, but I decided I was.
Okay.
What is your last name, Zangara, though?
Zangara. Mm-hmm. With all due respect to everyone in attendance, I feel that I oppose any changes. I think the way it stands now is the way it works. So I just want to be short and brief and get to the chase. I do oppose any changes. We just want it to remain the way it is. Okay? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret McClure, please, 109 Great Brook Road.
Hi, Margaret McClure. I'm here to oppose abandonment of the road also. My family has lived on this road for 40 years. I think we're the oldest people on the road. And when we first moved here, the road was not even paved, it was a dirt road. And we've seen nothing but improvement on the road since we've lived there. When we had the excitement of having to change the name of our road, because it was initially Upper Reservoir Road, when it was a dirt road, but when they paved it, they gave us our very own name, and we were so excited about it. We got the change of address and everything, and we became Great Brook Road. And I, as I said, I oppose the abandonment of the road. I'm afraid that if you abandon the road, there'll be less maintenance of the road, there'll be more safety issues on the road with, with large trucks with, you know, and even the aspect, God forbid, if any of us had an emergency and we needed an ambulance to come down the road and it wasn't maintained, you know, would that still happen? Would fire trucks be able to come down the road? So I'm here to impose the abandonment of the road. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Greg McClure, 109 Great Brook Road.
Hi, I'm Gregory McClure, 109 Great Brook Road. Been there for 40 years. I really came to try to get clarity on a point that seems confusing to me based on what I received as a notification in the mail about a proposition for abandonment of Great Brook Road. That's what it said, abandonment of Great Brook Road by the town, which sounds initially like, maybe I've misunderstood, initially like the town is saying, "We're not going to work on Great Brook Road anymore. No more plowing, no more maintenance." Maybe that's incorrect. I just want to verify the definition of the terms, because they were not clarified enough in the, in the notification I saw before. So if somebody could answer that question for me, what is the status of abandonment of Great Brook Road being proposed? The full Great Brook Road or just the paper road? That's my question. If somebody could answer that, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Michael Sinello, please.
Michael Sinello, 39, Taylor Terrace. Haven't timed myself tonight, so forgive me if I go over. Today I want to talk about a term called opportunity cost. Opportunity cost is the benefit sacrificed by making one decision rather than another in competing decisions. I use the qualifier "competing" because when decisions are not in competition, there's no benefit sacrificed. To clarify, I'll use the example of the decision to employ, which is the most common manifestation of opportunity costs that is easily conceptualized. George is a landscaper. He owns his own business but has no employees. He can mow 20 lawns a week. He could also endeavor into chemical treatments, which is where the good money is, but he doesn't have the time during the week to take on this new line of work. So George is presented with a decision to make. He could hire Manny, or he could not. Hiring Manny has obvious direct and indirect costs, Manny's salary, the various insurances and taxes associated with hiring someone, but not hiring Manny has the cost of sacrificing the opportunity to take on new work. This is because George has excess human capital, but that's another term for another day. I'll try to give another example we might find more applicable to us today. George's business takes off. He buys a fairly large piece of property with three buildings on three parcels of land, all separate. One is where the main office is, one is where a five-bay garage is, Building One, Building Two, and the other is where a 16-bay garage is, Building Three. George only needs four of the combined 21 bays, and after six months, finds himself using two of the bays in each of Building Two and Three. He could easily consolidate into each of the buildings, but he obviously can't afford to sell both of the buildings. He gets an offer to buy Building Two, that's the smaller one. Now he has a decision to make. There are obvious benefits to accepting the offer, but he shouldn't forget the opportunity costs, which may be to instead sell Building Three. Building Three is on a corner lot on a divided arterial highway at a stoplight and has 16 bays. Building Three has real potential to sell for 10 times the offer on Building Two. This is an enormous opportunity cost. Now Building Three is big enough to hold all of Building Two and the main office, but that would only require a total of seven bays, and would mean more than doubling his productivity in very short order to justify the new occupancy, and would sacrifice the ease of access to complimentary services on the side road adjacent to the main office, the side from across the street, which also has a multi-facility, the mechanic next door. He also would alienate his existing well-established client base, which appreciated the ergonomic entrance, the improved parking, et cetera. So I hope that when we're making decisions moving forward, we're doing a proper cost-benefit analysis, we aren't forgetting what are called opportunity costs. Thank you.
Mary Jane Lundgren, please.
Mary Jane Lundgren, 89, Tuniske Row. Good evening. Hope everybody's doing well here tonight. I just want to start out with saying I'm so excited about the connectivity grant for the sidewalks for Pettibone Community Center, and then sidewalks that could be on Route Seven, connecting the town to the community center. I think it, I'd like to say congratulations to Mayor Gronback and his team, Kathy Castaneda, who secured this grant when it looked really grim. And there were a lot of us that wrote letters supporting it, and I'm really happy to see it come to fruition at this point. So I can't wait to see the sidewalks start going in, there's no reason for a delay, and get that culinary school in there, and, you know, whatever else we can get in there, Votec schools, and make good use of that building. Which brings me to the, one of your items on the agenda about your adaptive reuse study that you're applying for, I think it's a $20,000 grant, which I think is, if you apply for that, I think it's just you're wasting state taxpayer money, because there's been several feasibility studies done already. The building is in gross disrepair, not ODA compliant. It is, will be a waste of New Milford taxpayer money to dump any, any further money into that building. You possibly have a really good proposal from Dakota. We've all seen what they did at Barton Commons. I think it's the best option for the town, get it back on, on the tax roll, and I think it will really help the residents of the town. We need the housing. We need affordable housing. We need, you know, housing for people that can't afford to buy a home. So it really makes a lot of good sense to really seriously look at the Dakota proposal. And in regards to the feasibility study that was done, I, there are so many questions about use and reuse of East Street School, and moving people to the Richmond Center, over to the senior center, which is totally ridiculous. They barely have enough room, even with their new addition. I just, the feasibility study to me is, was a total waste of time. The next thing I want to talk about, as Chair of the Democratic Town Committee, I want to talk about the appointment of a real estate agent to zoning. I have a lot of questions about that. We had submitted a name. Three months went by, he was called into your office, I spoke to you about it, I think at another council meeting. Three months go by, and voila, all of a sudden, a Democrat of your choosing appears on the agenda, who's a real estate agent. I hope you considered the possibility of conflict of interest, and I don't know who she works for or who she's worked for in the past, but I think that's a very serious concern, and we will be watching to see what her votes come up on what issues on zoning. So that's definitely going to be on our agenda. And I have to say, Pete, I'm disappointed that, you know, you talked about pulling together, and we sent you a really good qualified candidate, and you just strung him along for three months, and we all know how hard it is to get volunteers to come out and, and sign up for, especially like zoning or planning, which requires a lot of their time and a lot of their work. The other thing I just wanted to touch on was the library with the referendum. You voted for the bonding, you're sending it out to a referendum, and Mr. Mayor, I fully expect you to tell the community that you support, and you ask them to vote yes at the referendum. And I know you've said in the past that you don't like to tell people how to vote, but as being a leader, that's part of leadership, is telling them to get out and do the right thing, which is to support the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Robert Solak, please.
Robert Solak, 126 Great Brook. I ask my other neighbors of concern. My main concern is, is this property's developed, will it be a, it won't be a cul-de-sac anymore, and there goes the property value. And our main thing is, if you put one or two houses in there, fine, but if it goes all the way down to be crossing there, you know, there's the end of the cul-de-sac. And that's my main reason, is like my neighbors, we'd just like to keep it a cul-de-sac. And the other thing is, I've been up there 16 years, and it seems strange now for the town to want to write off on it after 16 years. It just seems, just seems kind of strange for some reason or another. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Jim Page, please. Jim Page, please.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of Dakota Partners. A lot of conversation has been made about our intentions with Fifty East Street. We were the developers and our team continues to manage Barton House at thirty-four East Street. So I think that's our track record. Our plan, I wanted to address everyone to clarify any questions or concerns because there's been some dissemination of information that's not quite our intention, so I wanted to clarify that. So in the April timeframe, we met with your mayor. Thank you, Pete, for
Yes, sir.
All the time you've extended us. And we submitted a letter of intent to purchase Fifty East Street for a million six hundred thousand dollars. Our intention was to create a revenue source for the town, both in taxes and in the million six, but also to provide much-needed affordable housing. Workforce housing has been a term used by some folks. And so we will, it's really a mixed income approach. So we'll be having some market-based rents, some at eighty percent, sixty percent, fifty percent. So it really is to engage the community in affordable housing, which the community has expressed their desire to have that. Beyond that, and I want to emphasize this point, we will not be seeking tax abatement. There are three ways in the state of Connecticut you can seek tax abatement. We will not be doing that. Our history in Connecticut has been, there's been confusion as to how to appraise workforce housing, affordable housing. So we want to be very clear and, and get that, any ambiguity off the table by, prior to close, we want an independent appraiser to come in and appraise the improved structure with our proposed rents that would be submitted to the state of Connecticut, along with all expenses on that property. That appraiser will identify what the value of that asset would be. We would then pay Milt, New Milford, the, the proper taxes associated with that asset, which means, you know, seventy percent times the mill rate. There is no tax abatement. We are not seeking a discount of any sort that has not been justified by the courts in Connecticut, which is you base the, the value of the asset based upon the rents that you receive, not market rents. It's, it's the actual rents that we would be receiving. So there is no discount, there is no tax abatement of, of any sort. The other is people banter around the use of affordable and workforce. And really what we want is to address the need within the community. So everybody uses those terms to their advantage. And I would like to say that, that all the development we do is affordable workforce housing. Basically, we want people within the community to be able to afford the housing in the community that they work in. Quite simply, that's, that's our goal, that's our vision, that's our mission. And that's what we're doing at, at thirty-four East Street. As far as the quality of the development, you know, we intend to keep the historic significance of the structure that's there. And that's profound. So that means in our offer, you can't just say, "Oh, they're willing to pay a million six." It's really a million six plus taking care of the asbestos abatement and the lead-based paint. That's another three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're taking on broker fees. And we are doing other things within that building, keeping the historic significance in that building. So the real value to the town
You have one minute, sure.
Thank you. The real value to the town is closer to, you know, two point three million dollars. And we would like the town's support and the council's support so that we can get this submitted to the state, so we can move forward and, and provide some solutions to New Milford. We were hoping to have that done this year. With the questions and, and all of the things that you're evaluating, I'm not sure that that's a possibility, but that's our hope. And that's why I'm here tonight, is to, to request, to ask your support so that we can move forward. But we're ready to move now for next year, so, you know, it's really on you. What we need is the letter of intent to be signed and that would be followed with a purchase and sale agreement. And then we would make the investment in the architectural and the civil engineering, et cetera. But in the LOI, we've preserved both the historic asset and the windows. Also, we acknowledge that the theater will have access for event parking. So I believe we've given the town everything that they're looking for. And so that's, again, my hope, that we can move forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And to the council, Jim, will still be here because you're on the agenda, so if they have any questions, we're on the agenda.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Got some baseball kids out, out there, so.
And they have a chemical, non-pronounced. A, oh, a sulphamine, sulphamine, okay. Five, really, ten calories of these.
Appreciate you guys coming out, representing your town, the way you do, showing your colors, outstanding job, guys. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the first one, and that's the same for everybody. Okay? And I'm going to call your names afterwards. We just want to tell you how proud we are of you guys. Outstanding job, Mr. Mayor. So that, and Ryan, congratulations, number twenty-three. Brian Gabanelli, I say it right. And then New Milford Cyclones, eleven and under Cal Ripken baseball team on your first-place finishes at the twenty-eighteen Cal Ripken Baseball Eleven U District Four Championship, twenty-eighteen Greater Hudson Valley League Eleven U Regular Season Championship, and the twenty-eighteen Greater Hudson Valley Eleven U Postseason Championship. Your team represented the town with honor and pride. Thank you and keep up the great work. Congratulations, outstanding job. Gabriel Green. Gabriel. How about Mike Wayne? How about Peyton? Coach Dave? Not here. How about Coach Jeff? How about Coach Dennis? Outstanding work, gentlemen.
Outstanding work, John. Get your, the mayor.
Back to you guys.
Make me know when it's getting focused.
Yeah, we had some team managers. Here we had some softball team managers, but I don't see them here. Next, I'd like to go to the, do we have the, on our rules and procedures, do we have, could someone come back if they want to address the council again? Is that in our rules and procedures? At the end?
I think we suspend our rules for public comment.
Yeah.
It's on the agenda, so you have to add, do you want additional comments or something?
No, public comment.
The gentleman that wanted to readdress the council again. It's in the audience.
At the end of the meeting?
Is it the end of the meeting? Is that what it is?
He already spoke yet.
Yeah, so it'd be at the end of the meeting, so. Next, I'd like to do mayor's comments. So I'll be brief. First, I'd like to congratulate the New Milford High School band in Color Guard for the successful start to their season. They won their first two competitions and they had a great, successful home show. Thank you to Councilman Skelly for being there. Congratulations also to the ladies, the New Milford High School cross-country team. They placed first in the Windy Trails Invitation. Congratulations to our teams. Outstanding work. Our road program continues. For those that have seen Long Mountain, we're continuing our work there, doing the milling, the paving. It's going to be done in three phases. So the first phase is in the southern part, so as they're doing the mill, they're reclaiming part of the mill, putting it down as a sub-base, and then they're going to be doing paving on that. So as they're going up the road, they're going to be doing all that reclamation paving and then moving on to section two. Squire Hill Road, which is the next reconstruction one, you're going to see part of the contractor's crew going over for the drainage, so be starting on that project as well. As you can see, Railroad Street was paved and milled, so was Young's Field Road, so was Town Farm Road, and we still have a lot more to do. Some of the work that we're doing, drainage on Little Field Road is being done. We're doing some road milling and paving on Cedar Hill, Carmen Hill, one to Poland. The reason why we're going just to Poland is Aquarian Water is actually going to be doing some work above Poland, so we're actually partnering with them. They're going to be paying some of our costs for our roadwork as they do their reconstruction on their piping. We're also going to be doing work on Stephanie and Sega. They're actually in the beginning of the works as well. We're also doing our crack seal program that was going to start this week, but due to the weather, it's going to be postponed until October first. Still River Drive, as you can see, that work is being milled, it's going to be completed and paved. That work is starting as of right now and we're going to continue to work on that. Speaking of infrastructure, we're also investing with our Board of Ed partners when it comes to a few things. First, we jointly purchased this year, we met with our superintendents, our Board of Education, our facilities, our finance departments in both, to work together for these joint infrastructure improvements. The first being our oil tanks. So together, we jointly purchased oil tanks. So for the Board of Ed, we purchased Serenoble and the Lilis Building. The town purchased for the police department, Town Hall. We're doing John Pettibone, we're just taking that old one that's dilapidated out as per we have to, per the deep. And then we're also going to do Serenoble and Lilis. By doing all those buildings and combining our purchasing power, we were able to save money in so doing. Those that start, that work will be starting in the next few weeks to a month, so you'll be seeing that activity as well. Next, the roofs. So there's been a lot of conjecture, I just want to make it clear to everyone, about New Milford High School. So we had a microburst on May fifteenth night this year, twenty eighteen. The microburst caused damage to our roof at the high school. Tarps were put up to keep the water out. As we were going through this process, as we did with our, our oil tanks, we met for our roofs to figure out our game plan because we're going to need new school roofs, not only on the high school, on Hill and Plain, Serenoble, and Northville. So we wanted to make sure our tax dollars go the farthest. When we had the microburst, we were waiting for our insurance carrier and we were also waiting for FEMA to see if we had any kind of opportunities to help us with the cost of the major roof. At first, we were going to get significant monies. About a million five is what we were told. That money was backed down to about two hundred thousand. So as we were going through that opportunity, obviously we had a lot of wet weather that just happened. Board of Ed Facilities Department came to the Board of Ed and let them know that now we were beginning to see some leakage that was going in for our infrastructure. So we made a conscientious choice to go ahead and repair the roof for now, so that we have a safe building for our employees and our student population. And we didn't want to do any damage to the rest of the building because we have a twenty-year-old school. So what I did was, under the powers of the mayor, we were allowed to do an emergency purchase, which is what we did. I spoke to Dr. Tracy, who is here tonight, and they are getting the roof fixed as of right now. So we're getting it fixed. While we're doing that, we're also looking at plans. We're looking at plans for the longevity of the building and how we're going to do it. We're working together to do that. How are we doing that? We're looking to see what's going to be the best advantage for the school and for the town. Is it doing an asphalt roof as it is now and bringing it up to code because it's a twenty-year-old roof? Or are we going to put a metal roof on there? And if it's a metal roof, are we looking to put it on with the ability to put solar on there to help with our energy costs? These are the opportunities that we're looking to work together to do. That takes a little time to get all that data together. The Board of Ed has also done an engineering study to see if the roof and how it can support solar, so that we'll have all of that information for you, the public, so that we can let you know the best decision we can make for the best return on your investment. With that being said, we're also looking at the other roofs as well that were on our list to begin with, but we had to kind of push them back because of the damage to the high school roof. So we're looking at the Serenoble roof and what the costs are going to be for that, for Hill and Plain and for Northville. But these are important infrastructure improvements that we need to make and we need to do it in the best physically prudent way. So we'll be getting back to you on that. But I wanted to let the people know that we are working together to make sure we give you the best return on your investment. The next I like, thing I like to say, and I like to keep it brief, is I like to thank our town employees. Every day they come out and they work. They work hard. Sometimes they get credit, sometimes they don't. But I like to thank them for everything they do on both the town side and the Board of Education side. For us Education side, for us taxpayers and us citizens. They're an integral part of our community, and they make our community better. So I'd really like to thank them for everything. And lastly, I want to talk about civility. That's one thing that we're going to do here as long as I'm sitting in this chair. Civility is an important component, and it makes our town what it is. New Milford is a wonderful place. I've said it since I've been here for 31 years. Everyone's time, talent, and treasure should be honored. For those people that have been elected or appointed, you have a much higher degree and standard to represent the town in New Milford. You should uphold it, and you should treat it with honor. And we're going to do that as long as I'm here. This is a wonderful place. There's lots of opportunity here, and we do not want to disturb the opportunity by people outside of our region thinking that this place is full of mean-spirited people, people that can't hold their actions. It's not good for business, it's not good for the town, and it's not good for our community. So what I'm asking is for our appointed and elected officials to be above and beyond reproach and to handle themselves with dignity and pride. And basically, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Item five. Move to appoint the following... I'm sorry, reappoint the following people to the Bar Planning Grant Program Steering Committee. Term for all members is September 11th, 2018, to March 12th, 2019, I assume. That would be the reappointment of Leba Furman, Julianne Bailey, Christopher Gardner, Lucy Wildrick, Richard Rosiello, and Frank Wargo.
Any discussion on the motion?
Katie, you did say 19.
Yes, I did. That's a... There's a typo on here, Stephanie, if you want to make note of that, you can see it.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I address the council?
Yes, mayor.
The Bar Grant Steering Committee is a condition of the state for the bar grant that we received. And so the expiration date of March this year is... We have to meet existence as long as the grant is active, and that will be much longer than March of next year. So I did not know if this would be treated similar to like the building committee whose term goes until the project is completed, because until the final report is into the state of Connecticut, you know, on the bar grant, then we have to be an active committee.
Town attorney, can we do that?
Yes, ma'am.
How would we do the end date, then?
Why can't we extend it? Excuse me, Matt? Is it not possible to approve what's here since we don't know what the end would be and then to extend upon the finding the date?
You can't. The bar grant, as Mr. Furman said, is a... Isn't a hundred and one crosses. We're in the state, and right now, we approved almost all the documents in my office. And I would say that the council's within its rights to put the 2019 date on this, the 3/12/19, with the caveat that could be...
Right, but it may go longer, is what Ms. Furman is saying. And since there's not a way to really predict what that is, if the council approves this, there isn't any reason it cannot come back because it is not a typical reappointment committee, as Ms. Furman said.
Correct. I mean, it's for a snapshot in time, which is what a grant is. I mean, once the town's done with the...
Exactly. But we don't know what that snapshot is.
Correct, and you could appoint it as a...
They would just like to be able to continue now.
Sure.
Probably can't after, because it's part of the... So would it be approved for the rest of... Approve them for a year?
Think you can't put a charter out?
Per the charter? No. So...
I would sense we can approve this for the six-month, get the correct wording, if we can come back with the correct wording in March to make sure we have it exactly where we want it.
That's what I think, too. The way it was stated.
You may hear back before then, who knows?
The motion is, as it reads on the agenda, only change is to amend the typo of 18 to 19.
Perfect. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Move to rescind the action taken on September 10th, 2018 Town Council Meeting. Irene Scerbalo mistakenly was... Her name was used as Irene Melzer on her application, and that's what was voted on. So we need to rescind that vote for her and then bring her back up. If you all remember, we did this on September 10th.
I mean, this is nothing more than a maiden name.
Correct.
For the Bike and Trail Committee 2 is what she was approved for. However, she was down as Scerbalo. I'm sorry if I'm messing up your name. But she was... She's already been sworn in, right?
Yes.
As Scerbalo, but she used the name Melzer when we approved her at the last meeting. So we just rescind it, and then we can put it back in.
Correct.
The general statutes do require that anybody appointed by the council be under the name that they are on the list of electors.
So we have a motion?
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And Ms. Scerbalo will be reappointed or appointed the next council meeting? Is that correct?
Can't point it out.
No, do it now if you want.
That's fine, I think I should. Yeah, she's not on the agenda, so that's why I'm asking.
Motion to amend the agenda to add...
Thank you.
6A to appoint Irene Scerbalo. It's a 5A, Doug.
No, 6A.
6.
I'm sorry. What I got is 6 here?
6A.
He's correct.
Okay. 6A to add Irene Scerbalo to the Bike and Trail Committee 2.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
As a technicality, I don't mean to be a pain here, but I think my first thing was just to add it to the agenda. I think we need to vote on that first as a technicality, and then the second thing to approve or...
The vote again.
We have a motion to add item 6A to the agenda?
Yep, that's already been motioned.
That's been approved.
Now it's added the name.
So now, I'd like to make a motion to add Irene Scerbalo to the Bike and Trail Committee 2.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 7. Move to approve the minutes of the regular Town Council Meeting of September 10th, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 8. Move to accept a donation to the Parks and Rec Commission, the amount of $1,100 donated from the Heaton family in loving memory of John Joseph Heaton Jr. of New Milford. The funds will be utilized to plant a tree with a memorial plaque on the town green. Funds are to be deposited in the Parks and Rec Gift Fund.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we know where to put it?
Dr. Mull?
I'd say... Do we know where to put it, or...
Not yet. Dan Calhoun would let us know. Dr. Mull?
These are... I was on Park and Rec for a long time. These are always very emotional, tough situations, because people always want to honor those who they loved and they missed and things like that. John is a great guy. He donated a ton of his time to this town. I wish there was some way, and I don't know how to do it, so I don't have an answer to the question I'm raising. I wish there was some way where a criteria could be set up for honoring, because when I was on Park and Rec, almost every month, people would come forward and say, "Can we do this? Can we do that on the town green?" And they're all lovely ideas. They're beautiful ideas. But it would be Monument Row if Park and Rec approved everything that was brought before. So I am voting for this. I'm just bringing it up as it's a very tough thing when you sit on Park and Rec, on that commission, and people bring these stuff forward, because it is very emotional. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Katie?
I just make a comment on that, Peter, that... Because we have groups that want to donate benches and trees, and I had this discussion with Dan, and he said that we do need several trees on the green, so that may be part of the reason for this, and for it was John, so... You're right, you're right.
Wait till the debate starts and I tie a tree.
Right. No, just to his point, that it's good that there's a process to say, to talk to Park and Rec, and he can say, "Well, you want to do something? These are the things we need."
There you go.
So you might as well...
Right.
I mean, just having the process in place.
There is a process, and they need benches. Lindemming is what I found out in talking about another bench for downtown, so yes, it is a good process.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 9 is our grant writer.
Hello.
Hello.
There are a couple of names listed under the grant writer topic for tonight, so we'll just jump right in, but I will pass around to my printed update if you want to circulate that so that I can review that with you once we get through these few items that I've requested action from. So the first item is acceptance of funds from the Iroquois Community Grant, and those funds will be used to purchase plantings to establish an arboretum just around the corner over at Holton Meadow. That was a program that was developed by Michael John Cavalero. It was, I believe, unanimously supported at the Parks and Recreation Commission, and we are looking to get those trees in the ground this fall, which is a preferred planting time of year for them.
No?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, just waiting for it to finish. And everybody got a copy? Okay.
Yes, there's a resolution sample there for you.
Right.
Second.
I think we have to read it out loud so it goes into the record?
Motion to waive the reading?
Okay. As long as it makes it in the minutes, that's it.
As long as we all agree. So we have a motion.
We have a second.
Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? The grant acceptance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Was that the way?
No.
No.
That's the...
The next one is authorization to apply. So the mayor and I and Kathy Castaneda met with the State Historic Preservation Office a couple of weeks ago, and while they were here, they had the opportunity to take a little mini tour of Town Hall. And as we were reviewing some of the items that our maintenance department has done such a wonderful job at taking care of for Town Hall, the topic of the roof needing to be replaced on this building came up. So immediately, they were very excited to be able to help because one of our maintenance department men, Tom Wilcox, happened to work for the company 20 years ago that put the current roof on this building. So what he was able to share with the State Historic Preservation Office is the roofing that was removed was a raised seam metal roof, which is similar to what you'll see on the barn behind Town Hall. It's kind of a green color. That roofing construction works well with the internal Yankee gutter system that's on this building. So that information was extremely valuable to the State Historic Preservation Office, and with that, the roof on this building is due to be replaced. They were very excited to ask us to apply for grant funding up to $50,000 to help defray the cost of being able to put a new roof on this building using what was historically on the building in the past. And I don't know if I have it printed. I was able to find, with some assistance, a picture of the building with the roofing on it from 1943, and it was really amazing. I've spoken to the State Historic Preservation Office. They are extremely excited for this project, so I do request an authorization to apply from you.
Item B. We have a motion. You want me to read this, Peter, or you want to waive it?
Motion to waive the reading. Except as written on our agenda.
Any discussion on waiving it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
Yep. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Do you know what the total cost of the roof would be? I mean, if this is to defray the cost? Do we have an idea of the total?
Not until we get a... Get the estimate. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. I believe there's $50,000 currently in the budget to go towards that roof replacement.
Yeah, that's not going to do it.
Right. Yeah, that's really not going to do it. Oh, my God. Definitely not. Okay, so the next authorization, while the State Historic Preservation Office was here, they took a tour of the East Street Building. They had been wanting to come out for several months. They were able to have the opportunity to look at some of the historic features on the inside of the building, walk around the building, take a look at the current condition of the property. And in discussions, as it has been known across the state, that New Milford is very concerned about what to do with some of our buildings that may be underutilized currently, they offered the State Historic Preservation... It's one of the certified local government grants. New Milford is a certified local government. We were able to attain that status, I believe with Mayor Furman did that for us years ago. So that makes us eligible for a historic preservation grant. What this grant would do is bring in an independent study, somebody to hold public meetings, run charrettes, to find out what the public's thoughts are on the potential, potential reuses of the property and the building combined. They would also review the statistics and demographics regarding the property, its location, the potential historic value, the proximity to the downtown, and put all of that together into a single cohesive package that can then be used by yourselves to decide what to actually do with that building. I don't believe it's a long and lengthy process. However, it would require grant funding. The application, if you approve the resolution to apply, the application will go in the first week of October. They will meet, as all of their grants that I'm talking to you about, they are decided by committee. They will meet the first week of November. They approve it, they send the money out. So it can be something that is relatively quickly started, can take course over the winter months. If, I notice you have this property also on your agenda later on, if you would like to defer this motion, until then, you're welcome to. I just ask that if you decide to move forward with it, that you do have the motion on the record when you vote.
Any questions?
And the amount of the grant that they're offering is $20,000?
Correct. It's $20,000, which is sufficient...
For the study.
...sufficient to cover the public meetings, the study, the data collection, and the resulting final report.
Walter?
Did we hear that this will be the function of the people that are interested in taking a look at the building?
That's if we go that route and do what they want to do.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That's if we go that route and do what they want to do. This, I think, will tell us that there might be other uses that can also... That building can also be used for.
I don't think Dakota Partners is going to hold public workshops. That's the difference I heard in what Tammy said versus the other discussion.
Katie?
The... If I understand this correctly, Tammy, that the study will look for adaptive reuse?
Correct.
Right, of all types?
Correct.
Affordable housing could be one?
Absolutely.
Other things I don't even think of could be another.
Not likely, but, you know, a grocery store. But truly, they would open the discussion up as a third-party entity. They would open the discussion up for suggestions, for ideas from the people of the town after they provided some information regarding the...
While maintaining that preservation, though, as...
Correct. State Historic Preservation Office, absolutely.
Right. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Any other questions? Dr. Mull?
I mean, this sounds weird, but $20,000 is not a lot of money to study. That's the bottom line here. Are they going to tell us anything we don't already know about this building? The southeast corner of that building has been collapsing for years.
The southeast corner of that building has been collapsing for years, it was built on a swamp, you know, it's not ADA compliant.
Well, I'm...
Cost per, cost per square foot is more than any building we have in town, you know, it's a money pit.
Well, one thing that stood out to me as I read this on the agenda was that this is a little different type of a study because it is the historic preservation from the state, and I've dealt with some of those people on Gordon Bridge, and I think, you know, they, their first thought is preservation, you know, adaptive reuse to preserve it and preserve its historic value. I'm not saying that people wouldn't, but they're not putting the dollar that could be made from it in front of that. I don't think there's anything to lose by applying for it.
I have a question. So Katie, in your experience in working with that group, because they're used to dealing with historic buildings, do, do they have a more efficient manner of dealing with some of the issues that we know exist at East Street now? You know, the crumbling corner, certain ADA compliance issues, are they in a better position to help with that than...
I can't speak that they're in a better position, what I can say is that their experience revolves around historic properties of all kinds, and therefore, they have seen the rehab or the lack of, or what can be done and what can't be done, and they are very good at seeing salvageable versus not. That's my experience, I'm just one person, but, that's all they do.
I would just like to add, because I think it's important, and I apologize for leaving this part out, one of the pieces of information they will provide is the estimate of cost based on the potential reuse ideas.
You mean the value, the assessed value based on what they would come up with, is that what you mean?
The, the cost...
Or the cost to do it?
The cost to do, the various ideas, so that the town can actually have an idea, if it were to be affordable housing, what the estimated cost would be, if the town perhaps wanted to hold on to that building and construct it as affordable housing, or sell the building, or if the town wanted to use it to move offices back in, or create a new office structure for the corporation, you know, anything like that, they would also provide some financial feedback and cost estimates to it. With that being said, there are other incentives and opportunities for other funding to come back to the town for various uses.
So Tammy, does that mean that if we give down this path, this grant, then we are more visible to other forms of monies that are available, that we would not be if we don't do this particular piece?
Correct, because you don't know what you don't know right now.
And a little more favorably on later grant applications having gone through this process?
I believe so, yes.
Potential of us getting this grant? High, medium, low?
High, very high.
And is there a, do you have any idea of the time, once, if they were to say, go, you have to file, as you said, the beginning of October? How long it will take them to do this assessment?
The assessment itself, I believe, Kathy, do you recall if they spoke about the time, a couple of months?
Right.
Three or four months, maybe?
I think one of the very important things here, too, is that there's a lot of interest out of the public in this building and what happens to it, so I think it would allow an opportunity for people to comment on it and just know what's going on.
Thank you, Tammy.
Good question.
Go.
Just to be clear, is this building on the market? Do we have a realtor in place, or no?
There is no realtor.
Right, so no realtor, so this property is still owned, we're not...
Town owns the property. We got a letter of intent from Dakota Properties. Right, so that's why I'm bringing this to the council.
So it's not on the market, it just had somebody that's interested in it?
Dakota Properties is interested by the property.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Are we...
So, would you like me to read the resolution, Peter?
Yeah, my only question is, I mean, assuming we, I mean, I don't want to put off this grant assuming that we go with Dakota Properties, because that's definitely a, you know, assumption, correct me if I'm wrong, but even if we approved Dakota Properties, that's still going to the town meeting or some other...
It would have to go to a town meeting.
Yeah, so I hate to put off something like this that could give us opportunities, because, you know, as we've talked about in many meetings, you don't, never know what's going to happen when the town has to decide one thing or the other, so I would like to, I mean, I think it'd be good to move forward if it's not going to cost the town any money.
Did you want to make the motion for that?
It's a resolution.
No, it's a, we have a resolution, I just asked Peter, Councilman Muller, and if he wanted me to waive, he wants to waive it.
Motion to waive the reading.
Second.
Second.
In the town agenda.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor of waiving the resolution?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Now, move.
Do we really save time when we have to go through waiving it?
Move.
Should we keep talking but not save time?
And Peter, you want me to not read this, right, because we just waived it, so...
Yeah.
Move that we go forward with what's written on this piece of paper.
Second.
The resolution.
The resolution as written on the agenda statement.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, I don't know what D is, there's nothing there. You have something else, Tammy?
I provided you with a brief update.
Oh, that's okay.
I haven't stood and talked to you about my activities.
This here?
In the grant writing office, so it certainly was timed.
Yeah, okay.
For the benefit of anybody that's listening and can't see on that sheet of paper, summarized some of the grant activities and highlighted some pieces that I felt were important for you to know. So to date, I have identified over $6.1 million in grant funding potential for the town of New Millford. Do I have more? Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't realize it did go all the way around.
Mike doesn't know, oh, he has it now, excuse me.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So I've identified over $6.1 million worth of potential funding, that's pretty much on a rolling 12-month cycle, as I continue to identify more grant potential, that number will increase. Those are both competitive and non-competitive grants and programs. Of those grants that were identified, I've submitted $3,812,69 worth of grant applications over the past six months, and that all stems from 14 applications ranging in value anywhere from a simple $1,000 to $2,106,000, which I'll talk to you about in a moment. So from those applications, I have had four positive responses back, bringing in a total of $414,027 to the town. Some of those programs, I've explained in the following section of this, so activities there, some activities there, so I'm actually very disappointed. We did not get voted to receive funding for the Administration for Community Living Innovations in Nutritions Program, which was the senior meal program. I was very, very excited about that, I think, I know the seniors up at the senior center were very excited about bringing their lunchtime meals into local catering and fresher food, but what that grant application lacked, and we had a very short notice on that to put it together, is it really lacked some evidence-based metrics that they were looking for, that we needed to connect the health of our seniors to the value of this program and what they were looking to do with funds. So we did not receive that, however, we did receive the AARP Community Challenge Grant that will purchase a few new benches and game top tables that'll be located in the downtown area, one by the senior center and one at the Riverwalk, and a third game top table down at Youngs Field Park. So if you're not familiar with a game top table, those are tables that you sit at that have a permanently installed checker or chessboard pattern on them, so you can bring your game pieces, sit under a tree, and just play a friendly game. The senior center will be working with youth agency on developing an intergenerational program around that as well, that will kick off in the fall.
No poker table?
No poker table, Walter, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll keep an eye out for that one.
Okay.
Okay, okay. There is a lot of activity around the senior center, and as I've explained before, there tends to be a lot of funding for the seniors, so there, we have a couple of other outstanding applications currently. One is for an evidence-based exercise program that will be held in the evenings and on the weekends to attract perhaps the younger generation of seniors, so that they become more familiar with some of the potential opportunities for them at the senior center as they begin to age and need services. And so there's a few others as well. There is another one, Connecticut Community Foundation, their grant deadline is coming up on October 5th, so we were encouraged actually to provide an application to address the needs of our LGBT senior citizen community, that across the state is something that the state and senior centers throughout the state are looking to find a way to support that segment of people. I've also worked very closely with the Personnel Department in a couple of awards, so we have a new training program, as you guys are aware, that Greg is running through the Personnel Department, I nominated that to the KERMA Excellence in Risk Management Award. If we're, if we are receiving that award, we will get $2,500 to expand continued trainings. Very similar to that, the Municipal Excellence Award that is put out on an annual basis by Connecticut Conference of Municipalities is a $1,000 award, however, what they were looking for is collaboration and community impact. So Camilla's Cover was nominated for that, and I think it was a very strong application. We still have not heard back on that application, however, the award recipients will be recognized at the annual CCN conference at the end of October, so we should be hearing about that soon. That would provide $1,000 to Camilla's Cover to continue the amazing program that they started over the summer. Some, a little bit of money for some of our neglected cemeteries came from OPM, and the big one that I skipped right over, which I'm really excited about, is the $2.1 million. That was a program that we entered, I worked very, very closely with Public Works Department and our mechanics down there for the application to go into the VW Diesel Emissions Reduction Program. And it is not a 100% funded purchase, but it is a 65% funded purchase. So pulling a lot of information together, the final application ended up being $2.1 million. If we are awarded in its entirety, that will allow us to replace 15 of our Class 8, which are our big plow trucks. That would bring the current fleet into the condition of being 2010 model or newer, because those 15 trucks, some of them were model years in the 90s, early 90s, they had to at least be a 2009 or older. Then there are also three smaller plow trucks that made it into that program that qualified for replacement, so we should hear from that by, I'm hoping by the end of October. That's currently in technical review by the Department of Energy right now. They were supposed to have some answers for us at the end of this month, I just checked in with them, and they're running behind with the technical reviews based on the amount of applications they received, so. Couple of other things coming up, Preservation Office, you guys did some approvals for me just now for that, thank you very much. The end of October, we will be submitting a recreational trails program to deep as well for the next stage of the Riverwalk, to continue moving that project forward, as well as some additional things surrounding trails in general, including some maintenance of the trails we have that are outside of the downtown area that haven't received the maintenance they've needed over the past couple of years.
Excuse me, Tammy, how much does that weigh?
I don't have a total value on that yet, that will be several hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Katie? On any of those, is there any of our equine trail work and interest being seen in there, anywhere that you could apply for?
I haven't seen anything specific for that, but as I go through this application, there may be an area that I can include that, I'll keep an eye on it for you.
No, to Katie's point, sorry, wasn't recognized. I think, so I looked through the point system on one of those grant applications, I think there were like eight more points, if there's equine use.
Yeah.
And the equine group that I'm a part of, they, council their meeting tonight, but they were talking about Slaughter Alley and exploring our Parks and Recreation, that was an equine...
Okay.
Trail, so I'll get some information.
Horses and seniors are big.
Okay. Absolutely. And as always, if you have any questions, you see a grant, thank you, Mr. Skelly, for sending me information over the weekend, I appreciate that. That was actually the connectivity grant that they were announcing on that article that you had sent over to me. But if you see any funding opportunities, or you hear of things that you think are going to be valuable to the residents and the community as a large, and we need some funding for it, let me know. It's very important, I try to absorb as much information about what's going on as I possibly can, so that I always have an eye open for funding opportunities that we may not recognize are there immediately, but can use in the future.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Just one question, Katie, I was just looking at the numbers, and it looks about 40% of the get-back, so I think that's awesome, you can get 40%, what you're at right now, for going out and getting grants because you can't get them all, but 40% right now, the number you're at around 40 is pretty good.
Thank you.
So thank you for your time and effort.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any, any other question? Thank you, Tammy.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Item 10A, motion to accept job description for the road construction surveyor.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
10B, move to accept the job description for the design engineer/civil engineer.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 11, from the tax collector, move to accept the tax collector refunds from September 2018 in the amount of $7,577.34, leaves us a balance of $47,977.54.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 12, okay, it's going to be discussion and action to move the following regarding Great Brook Road, the discontinuance, partial discontinuance of Great Brook Road per the motion that we have here on our agenda. If you'd like me to read that, I will be happy to, or Peter, if you want to go to wave it?
Yeah, we should read that.
We'll have our town attorney speak to this.
Thank you. So the discontinuance of a road, whether partial or full, is set forth in the Connecticut General Statutes. In this case, the town in August of 2017 received a petition from a private citizen, or from two private citizens, about the discontinuance. The town, as we learned in July, had one year to act on that. What does that mean? It means initiate the process to research it. Since that time, it's been researched by our town engineer, Dan Stanton, through the Public Works Department, by Kathy Castaneda, and given the way the situation was, it needed to be referred to the Planning Commission for, as Mr. Nahom and Ms. Francis know, an 824 referral. That has been done. All of the property owners in the area that is proposed for closure were notified by letter, from what I'm told by Mr. Stanton.
No.
Is the sign in the street?
No letters.
No letters, nothing.
May I speak, Mr. Mayor? The properties adjoining the area of discontinuing, not all of the properties on Great Brook Road, just... The public, excuse me, the public can't speak German. Thank you. The letter from Mr. Stanton is here, that was sent to anybody who owned property that was adjoining the area proposed to be closed. The sign was posted in accordance with Connecticut General Statute 13A-49. Copy of the proposal has been on file for the last 30 days in the town clerk's office, so as far as the process goes tonight, the council can approve or disapprove this. In any event, it goes to a, the council approves a recommendation for this, it must go before a town meeting where all electors and taxpayers will have the opportunity to vote on the discontinuance. Katie?
Katie, I have a question.
Sure.
Which was raised by someone in the audience this evening. When I saw the picture of the sign, and I'm not, I don't know where it was located, they referenced, but I, too, was, having been a planning member, commission member, what is the partial discontinuance? the partial discontinuance? I mean, I understand what the word partial means.
Partial discontinuance legally means...
No, I understand that, but point is, this road is, this, that's what they want to decommission, isn't from here to there. What's the partiality? How is it determined and where is it said?
The meets and bounds and the copy of the survey were given to the town council in your, it was either the September 10th meeting or the August 13th packets, the survey by Chuck Farnsworth, Mr. Zarba, is that correct?
So, no, but I'm asking you in legal terms, what partial means in any given instance is determined by something else?
Partial means, and again...
In this case, a survey by Farnsworth.
Correct. And it was in the council's resolution of September 10th.
That was for us, but they live there. I'm just curious how, because someone asked a question.
Right. And then again, the proposal, as the statute does require, has been on file in Ms. Pritchard's office since August 22nd, I believe.
And I just, you made a comment also that the petition came through two people, came from two residents?
Kathy, is that correct?
Yes.
And there's, well, 10, maybe 11 here this evening spoke opposite that. I'm just curious, were they at the Planning Commission when this was all done?
The part that's being, just the part that's paved is not being impacted at all.
I understand that.
Right.
But they know that, too. They're not talking...
I don't think they understand.
They're confused by that.
They don't understand that, I don't think.
Right, no.
But we're confused if it wasn't pointed out.
No, I don't want to start a dialogue, sir. I just, I just want to make sure it's clear to everybody in the room because not everybody, as myself included there, when you say partial, the first thing when I saw the sign is, well, I'm familiar with the road and what's partial mean?
I mean, the meets and bounds were covered in the council's resolution of...
And only the abutting landowners received?
Pursuant to statute.
To the part that's being discontinued, which is an unimproved part, just the woods we have. The part that is paved is not being impacted at all.
I understand.
So, I'm sorry, Katie, would you come?
No, I just...
Okay.
Unless you own property that's on the part being discontinued, you did not get a letter.
I understand. I just want to clarify that. And I understand that there was some misconception. And I think what the resident said was that by discontinuing part of this road, would that mean that the town would then pay less attention to the paved part of the road, if I heard that correctly? And I guess because it's not clear to everyone what that means by discontinuing just the unfinished part, that's all.
Correct.
I just wanted to get that out there.
I mean, and that's the other thing, too, is that if the council approves the partial discontinuance tonight, meets and bounds and everything will be on file prior to the town meeting for anybody to inspect in the, it's pretty clear. I mean, you got it right down to what's on the southwest corner, southeast corner, that kind of thing.
So our charge is to approve, to go forward to a town meeting.
Correct.
We're not making any approval, so y'all knows, we're not making any approval here this evening that anything would be discontinued.
Correct. You could, you could of course turn it down and there would be no town meeting, but what you're approving tonight will ultimately have to pass town meeting muster.
Okay, thank you.
So the other thing I heard tonight in public comment is the concern is that the, from the people who live on Great Brook Road, besides maybe not the type of notification they would have liked, I'm thinking of words very carefully, I'm not saying that nothing procedurally was not correct, that they would have liked to have seen a little bit more notification because they're concerned that there's going to be development on the rest of that road. So what are the safeguards they have? I mean, one of the gentlemen did stand up and said, "That's not my intention," but we, we know sometimes how that goes, right? Things happen and your family members have other ideas and stuff happens. So what is the recourse vis a vis that concern about the residents? Is it only to go to town meeting or not?
The town council could vote tonight to not do it, and that's it.
Could we go to delay until there's more discussion opportunity for those residents who are on Great Brook Road as the paved part?
As a council, you, you have the information you need in front of you to make a decision as the extension of the legislative body. You have, in this case, the 824 referral, the Planning Commission. All of the stops were met. There's not, procedurally, there's nothing to stop the town council from either turning down the partial discontinuance or approving it tonight, but in any event, the ultimate decision would, there's nothing, there's no more information for the council to get on this.
I'm not, I'm not saying that the council necessarily needs more information, but postpone it so that there's more information for the residents of the paved part of the road, who seem to be caught by surprise.
I would just like to say that we have all we need, but I clearly see that there are people who live there, and I understand what it's like to live in an area when someone else decides to do something, and even though you might not abut it, it's going to impact you. And no offense to the gentleman who owns the farm there, the farm, as farms it, but there are, you know, the future goes on and, you know, I think perhaps there should be some more information. Give them more time to get more information. I'd like to get some more information.
It might also be a benefit to hear from Kathy because she's been, I guess, shepherding this for the last year, or from Mr. Zarba as far as specific questions that you just asked.
Mike has a question.
I don't know if we want that. I mean, they might, I'm just saying. I believe our job is to make sure that they know what's going on.
Mike?
Yeah, I guess, I, well, three questions, I guess. I heard a lot of the comments in the public about being worried about, they have a cul-de-sac, would say, "I want to keep this in cul-de-sac." And I'm confused at why discontinuing a road would ruin the chance of keeping the cul-de-sac. Seems like it's the opposite to me. Someone correct or wrong, if you don't discontinue the road, it seems like your chances of having that cul-de-sac removed are greater because then, then that's why I guess I'm confused at, because the road, the road exists and if the town wanted to, right now, would the town pave that?
No.
Mike?
Well, it's, it's private, but their point in this, Mike, and I do understand it very well, is that if the road is discontinued, who owns that, who takes care of that road? Who owns it? Who can do something with it?
Thank you.
The gentleman, one or two or however many people petitioned for it, it's not as if the town is going to continue to keep it and just put it on the shelf and not do anything with it. That's a whole different story when the town takes a road off its... But their point is, by taking that away from the town, if someone wanted to develop this property in here, this road could be made into a passable road. It's not, it's not practical right now, the way it is, but this road could be made into a... And Mike Zarba can speak very well to that.
I'll try to succinctly, you know, kind of put it in perspective. So the town owns what we call a paved road right now. We have a paved portion of the road down to cul-de-sac. From that point forward, going downhill, down towards Heacock Crossbrook Road, it's a gravel, unimproved, frankly impassable in terms of vehicular traffic right now. Mr. Dogland had requested to abandon that portion of the road. Basically, it's a, it's a steep grade road currently. I think to, I believe his name, just said it. Technically, the town can improve that road at some point, obviously with the taxpayers' , you know, funding, but could improve that road all the way down to Heacock Crossbrook Road to make it a through street. That is a practical solution if we were to determine that based on traffic studies or other requirements. The idea of discontinuing it eliminates the town's wantability to do that or even desire, I guess I would say, to make it a through street. As for the development side of it, by discontinuing the road, it abandons that portion of the right-of-way and allows it to go back into private ownership to the adjoining property owners.
That's my question. It goes to the, with the person on either side who is...
Half the street goes to one side and half the street goes to the other side.
And this gentleman owns the property on both sides.
It becomes taxable land, I believe in this case it's about 1.7 acres, if I'm not mistaken. You know, additional taxable land that goes back to, you know, the tax rolls. Separate from that, I'll say in terms of the development side, the owners currently have property adjoining what would be considered a public right-of-way. It's an unimproved public right-of-way currently, but it is still a public right-of-way. They have vested rights under the Planning Commission regulations, zoning commission regulations to subdivide that land, whether the road exists there or not, they still have that right. If the road doesn't exist, they would actually have to go through a secondary step to get access to a public road in some, of some sort. There are two options at the end of this particular stage would be to the cul-de-sac portion of Heacock Crossbrook Road or to, I'm sorry, I said that incorrectly, the dead-end portion of Great Brook Road, the cul-de-sac portion there, or down to Heacock Crossbrook Road. And they would have to design, pay for, and improve that road at their own individual cost, not at the taxpayer cost, unlike other roads that you had to improve because of subdivision through. So I think there's a bit of misconception as to what maybe the discontinuance does, but it abandons the town's responsibility and liability to do any maintenance on that portion of property.
So whose responsibility is it that it doesn't become an improved road and a through road that the people on one end and the other end, for that matter, have no control over? The person who owns the property on either side decides to develop it. Who, what, the town's going to abandon it, so who has, this has come up before, as you know.
The Planning Commission.
What?
The Planning Commission.
That's exactly right. And I was on the plan, this came up.
All the land agencies have authorities of...
Yeah.
How land gets subdivision, based on their safety protocols, I would venture to say just based on the current knowledge, it's, it's a very steep grade, all in that area. It's, it'd be a very difficult road to build to town standards.
But not impossible.
Yeah, but now it's very possible.
If it were not abandoned, there could be, there is some argument to be made as to whether or not in its existing form, that it can be developed and left in the state of town, even though that does not meet current town standards for a safe roadway.
I guess I'm just saying, it seems like there's an extra step if we abandon it. If it, if, right now you have the cul-de-sac. If we abandon it, it certainly seems like it's a harder process to get that cul-de-sac to end and make it through way, because now you've got to go through a planning commission. And part of the planning commission is like, well, we abandoned this road, why would the town want to re, I just, I don't know, that's why I'm confused, is why, why do we think that the cul-de-sac has a better chance of being taken away than we discontinued a road that would extend the cul-de-sac? It seems like we'd make it hard, because then it's got to go through planning, and now you have to put people in planning, and then everybody in the town, everybody in the street would be able to come through, everyone on the street then would be able to come through and say, "I don't want the cul-de-sac. You guys are the ones that abandoned it. Why would you want to not make it a road?" I mean, correct or wrong, it just seems like there's more steps to make it a through road if it becomes abandoned.
Mike, was the Rocky River Road considered an abandoned road by the town?
It still is an abandoned road by the town.
Thank you.
It is not a discontinued road, Katie, is the difference. So the process that we're dealing with tonight...
That was considered to be turned into a thoroughfare to make the top of Candlewood Mountain another access egress, and it's far steeper than this road. So I mean, it's a possibility. I'm not, I don't want to impugn these people that made this petition, but I think there is a valid reason to be concerned if you live on the road, that perhaps there was some other way the Planning Commission might have, well, we're only talking about sending it to a town meeting, so that's all, I don't want to say anything about the...
But if it's, if it's not, Mike, I guess, my point is, I think the answer to some of their fears is the discontinuance eliminates a good portion of that. It makes it much more difficult, to Mike's point, what Mike just said, if a developer were to desire to do that, they would have to go through three additional steps, which is the Planning Commission, zoning commission, and maintenance process, which currently, the road exists as a legal road. It's not a formally maintained road, but it does legally exist as a public right-of-way. And that in and of itself allows it to be done a little differently, a little easier, I guess I'd say, very possibly. So discontinuing, at least in my opinion, discontinuing it kind of solidifies that it's not going to be a through street. But if that's something that we want in the future, and I think we want the Planning Commission to do it.
If it's left the way it is, the chances of the town ever turning that into a developed road is zero.
Correct.
And I guess, you know, I can't ask any questions.
I have to go back to another situation, Katie, and I don't, I don't recall if you were on town council at the time, but Roostdale Hollow and...
Yes, I remember that.
Salma Road were effectively those same kinds of things. They were paper roads that were successfully, in my opinion, at least unfortunately, forced to be developed by the town of Milford, taxpayer money, to actually build roads for a private developer. And that's a precedent that we're trying to eliminate sections of paper roads so that the town isn't exposed to that possibility. This is a road that, you know, because the petition came through, you know, we have to see the opportunity to bring it forth as, you know, to the council. And, you know, we don't see the value in keeping it as a town road for that purpose because it doesn't serve our needs. We don't see ourselves developing it as a, as a through street. And why allow a developer possibly in the future to come through and cause the taxpayers of Milford in total to have to develop a road for them so that they can enhance the value of their property?
I understand, but the town didn't make the decision to bring this to the Planning Commission. The town was happy the way it was and nobody said a word until a resident, a property owner, brought it forward in a petition.
Well, that in and of itself requires us to take action in the year, so...
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying is that it wasn't something the town was concerned about, right?
Yeah, it actually, that's not true, but it is.
Well, I don't, as I'm asking...
We have lots of paper roads, frankly, we're concerned about it and need to deal with more.
And would you do the same thing? Go to the Planning Commission to have it, you know?
Correct. Any discontinuance or frankly, purchase of a property as well, or easements require, still require an 824 referral.
Right.
Yes.
So if the, if we, beyond the discontinuance and the abandonment, is the guardrail going to go back and the cul-de-sac reinforced at the end or not?
We're, I don't know, I don't know that one has to do with the other right now. We're in the process of reconstructing Great Brook, the paved portion of Great Brook Road down to the cul-de-sac right now.
The reason that I ask is that one of the concerns was, and I've seen both sides, former farm girl, you know, the landlords talked about having SUVs and quads and people getting onto their land, which, which happens, I grew up with that. And then the cul-de-sac residents, I'm going to call them, talked about the guardrail coming down and that increasing traffic through their cul-de-sac, and that's their primary purpose is to want to maintain that. So again, if we as a town are saying, "Okay, we're going to agree to the abandonment, this is no longer a town road, our liability stops the cul-de-sac, are we putting the guardrail back or not?"
I believe the guardrail came down because of the driveway permit, which is a leave of permit that a property owner can request or apply for. If they, I mean, their property does abut Great Brook, in this case, if I'm not mistaken, the property abuts Great Brook Road, they have a legal right to pass, repass from Great Brook Road to their property.
Okay.
They applied for a driveway permit for that, I believe.
And it was great.
They took the guardrail down, if my memory serves me, but I could be wrong on that altogether, that's my recollection.
Okay.
Mike?
If right now he decides he wants to develop these pieces of land, and part of that he's going to put in, he's going to put in a road there at his expense, up to town standards, can we stop that?
Well, he would stop, one, he'd stop to go through Planning Commission, certainly, and getting approval. First of all, there's two, I think there's two lots we're talking about, I believe there's two individual lots that currently exist. To subdivide those, he would, you know, he would need to go through Planning Commission if they're going to be multiple pieces of property. He'd have to do that in conformance of Planning Commission. If my recollection serves me right now, the Planning Commission regulation requires if there's more than, or up to, if there's up to three lots, it requires a common use driveway. If there's that, actually, if you go all the way up to six lots, it could be a common use driveway. A common use driveway is a privately maintained right-of-way in some fashion that gives access to certain properties. It's the maximum they could put on a private road. If it was more than six lots that were being developed and used from the same accessway, it would need to become a public street at that point. They'd have to design a town road, effectively a road to town standards under those Planning Commission regulations, to those standards, you know, to use more than, to use more than six lots.
As a private driveway can be done right now, or?
They have a driveway.
Private driveway can be done for one driveway per lot, basically, is what we...
I'm just, yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get it more set in my mind is, for this driveway to eventually be made, is it easier now or is it easier later?
Well, here's a permit. The driveway permit exists, got a permit, right?
Correct, yes.
One or two?
I believe it's just...
Two, one?
One permit.
You got one?
I don't know the, I want to say 140.
No, he just said one.
Very possibly, number one forty, Great Book Road, I believe.
So a permit was, was given out without, with the road and the state that it's in?
With, correct, for them to connect to Great Book Road, yes?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. And did that permit have to say, Mike, to the best of your knowledge, that, or not allow or allow a guardrail to be removed? And if it had to be removed in section, partially, let's use that word, to get the driveway in, who's the responsibility to put it back? As one woman stated, there was, somebody ran right straight, but it isn't really a cul-de-sac if there's not something to stop you from going through.
Correct.
What was we installed?
No, it's not.
We can, public please, thank you. We can obviously block access to unimproved areas on the cul-de-sac, but you can't put guardrails unless somebody's legal right-of-way to access their property.
No, but weren't they on the road? The guardrail was at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Correct, but now, now that, that portion is a driveway, it's a driveway going off the end of the cul-de-sac.
The whole set, the whole thing?
Just, no, the portion that the guardrail said. So the guardrail was stayed down for that purpose. It can go in other areas beyond that, and the traffic, I guess you'll call it, would be focused to somebody's particular driveway in that case. The private property owner could stop people from going through there too.
If the guardrail were moved, just for, moved forward or back on the developed part of the road, in other words, why isn't there a guardrail there? It's our liability, as I think Councilman Heda mentioned.
Because there's a driveway. It's a driveway.
Yes, but what happens if somebody runs right straight through?
They drive down a driveway.
But then on the other side of that, but on the other side of that driveway is a route, the road that's not developed.
That would be up to the private property owner to maintain.
I see, okay.
You know, we don't maintain.
Okay. No, I realize if it's that, if that, I don't know, this driveway didn't exist when I was last on Great Book Road. So in other words, you're saying that the guardrail's gone, there's a driveway there, comes across into his property?
Correct.
Okay.
It's not a driveway.
Katie?
I know it well. I was in planning when Great Book.
Any other discussion?
Leave a driveway, don't say.
Not to know.
All right, all right, public please.
Mike, maybe you can answer. I really want to get back to kind of some very, very basic questions I have. What is the zoning for this property? The property I'm referring to?
R80.
R80 is the answer?
I don't know.
Well, what it was at the time, it was made in development.
Yeah, I don't know if it says.
Kathy, you know.
R80.
Cassidy, do you know?
Right, I got it.
I don't know offhand, but that's good. Sounds right. Be typical up there, two acre zoning.
All right, so it's most likely two acre zones. So I need this fundamental question answered for me. The owner, oh, excuse me, the owners of the property that are requesting the change in what we're referring to as the paper road, okay?
Correct.
What changes, if this road is decommissioned, how does that change what they can do on their property?
It doesn't change it at all.
It doesn't change the number of approvals.
Correct.
So they own a piece of property in a residential area. By zoning rules and regulations, they are allowed to build a home on this property?
It actually may take away, I'm going to, I'm going to put it in quotes, because I can't say this definitively, it may actually take away some rights from them, because the entire frontage of their property now abuts a public highway, which will not be the case should the discontinuance go through. Only a portion of their frontage would abut a public right-of-way. Does, does that make sense to you?
What, what changes, in other words, what changes what they can do with their property? Does it change what they can do with it?
It may, it may actually limit a lot more severely what they can do with it, because the entire frontage of that property doesn't no longer abut a public highway. If, in other words, I'm going to, this is a big lot right here, right?
Yeah.
They could chop it up into, say, six different lots, all of them abut this current paper road. If this paper road no longer exists, requirement under zoning regulations and planning regulations is that they need access to a public road. So they can't subdivide a piece in the middle here, because it doesn't abut a private road. So they can't necessarily subdivide it as great without building, either building a new public road, or a common use driveway they can put across their own land and give them.
And presently, they obviously all have access.
Correct.
There's access to.
They all have access to it, yes, they do. And they will remain to have access to a public street for the three lots that exist there, except the entire frontage of the property won't be on a public street.
Right. Here's one access here, there's the other access comes over here, and then one access has to come in here, no?
Correct.
Yep. Or, or, oh, no, no, it may make them all.
This, this part stays as public street down to here. So this blue property has access here, the yellow property does, and the blue property here has access to Great Book Road.
And this comes off this bottom drive.
I don't think that that's part of the same way. So they, they have access to Great Book Lane. Okay? The blue property has access to Great Book Lane, the yellow property has access to Great Book Lane, that's a public street, and this blue property retains access to Great Book Road, the cul-de-sac. And that's all, that's all they need.
Fundamentally, it doesn't change what they can do with their property. They own property, it's own residential.
Correct. And they still have the right to subdivide if they can meet the planning commission regulations.
But if they sub, if they got approval to subdivide it, they'd have to build the road.
They would at least have to build a common driveway. There's no doubt they would have to build a common driveway.
Common driveway to these houses.
Look, two, two more seconds. So if we don't decommission the road, it will be difficult for them to build a common driveway to get down to there, if they wanted to subdivide.
If they, if you don't discontinue the road, the liability could be, in my opinion, that the town of New Milford needs to improve the portion of road to get to the part of the property that they want to get to.
So zoning said you could split up, I'm just looking at one here. Man, this is small print, shoot. It looks like eight acres, eight point seven six.
Can I use this?
Oh, man.
Yeah, the Great Chisels.
At work, I have loops that magnify two and a half. I can see great bleeding. For those of you that didn't see.
And the one, because I needed to look at it too.
I think that's eight point seven something. Thank you, Michael. All right. So if the owner of this property said, goes to zoning and says, I want to subdivide, it's R80, I can break it into a few lots, then zoning doesn't say, well, you need to have a common driveway down there. And if zoning were to approve that, then we might be liable to help with them, because we still own that property?
If, if in its current condition, yes.
The common driveway has to go to the main road.
Public highway.
Public highway.
Right.
Which currently, there's more of the public highway than there would be if the discontinuance were approved.
So if you look at it that way, Peter, you see the, the way it would have to.
So it limits, in my opinion, it limits their scope a bit more by discontinuing this portion.
And it takes the liability of the town having to pace it to the road.
Thank you, Matt.
I got, one question, Mike. I kind of keep it easy. Regardless if the road is there or not there, can landowner still subdivide it and put a private driveway? Either way?
Every landowner has a right to.
So either way, whether we discontinue it or continue it, he still has the right to do a common driveway down there and build a lot. So regardless of our decision, one is liability for us, but if he wants to decide to do it, then he's allowed to do a private driveway, either way, correct?
As long as he can show he has access to a public road and meet the safety and criteria that the planning, zoning regulations set, then yes, he can.
Now, can the planning and zoning decide to go one way to Heathcock Crossing or up toward Great Book? How does that work?
It would, frankly, it would depend on the particular piece of land. In this particular case, it looks like two of them would be better serving to the Heathcock, Rossbrook side, and one would be better serving to the Great Book Road side.
Right. And I think the biggest fear for the people that live down here is the traffic. If he does subdivide it, he said he's not, but, you know, nothing lasts forever. But regardless, if he, if he doesn't get, I mean, if he does get the driveway or the road or not, he can still build if he wants to, correct?
In my opinion, discontinuance does nothing to change the property, the current property owner's right to subdivide the land. And I think to Mr. Mullins' question or point, in my opinion, it limits them a bit more than the current condition that it's in, in terms of it being a public driveway.
Yeah, and that was the only thing, the only thing I want to be clear with, that either way, he can put a driveway in there if he wants to subdivide, either way.
But if it's discontinued, the chances of it being continued from one side to the other are pretty similar.
There's a bit different standards, Mr. Skelly, on that, simply because of the amount of public right-of-way that exists today.
Okay.
He would have more flexibility in its current state because of that. That's, that's why I believe it would be more difficult for those particular, the three property owners involved here, to subdivide their land in the future, simply because you're limiting the amount of public right-of-way that they can tie to.
So that would benefit.
That in and of itself, that would benefit, I think, what the residents have asked or talked about tonight, is that would at least limit it more. It wouldn't eliminate it. I don't believe it ever would eliminate it, but it's certainly limited further at this particular point in time.
So it would make it harder for it to do it.
That's my view, yeah.
Do we all have enough information to move on this motion to send it to a town?
Can I just clarify? I know I heard a question earlier tonight, and it had to do with access and ambulance and, just to be clear that this, you know, this discontinuance absolutely bears nothing on the current improved portions of roadway. The access, the maintenance, and everything that goes on on those roads will all remain the same. This is a complete portion of road that is not at all maintained.
The town will not ignore the developed part of this road.
In terms of snow plowing, it's not an accessible area for ambulance and fire and stuff like that. I mean, obviously, amongst gators and other things, they can get there, but not on, in terms of public streets. So I, I just wanted to clarify that for a point, too. I'm sorry.
So we have a motion.
Any other discussion?
Did we have, I can't even remember now, sorry. I made the motion?
You made it, but every second.
No, I didn't think so. We have a motion on the floor to send, there you go. And the motion is to send this to a special town meeting.
Well, first, your motion is to approve and recommend to a special town meeting, and then the second motion is to actually call the town meeting.
Mm-hmm. So that's our motion that's now up for us to vote, to send this to special town meeting.
Any discussion on the motion?
I just want to make a point. When I originally read the agenda, I thought this was a non-issue. My mistake. I'm going to be abstaining tonight, because this is just one issue I would prefer to think about for a couple more weeks. But if it's voted towards, we'll vote for it. But I just want you to know where I'm going to be voting.
And can the town attorney just clarify for everyone, because I understand what Peter's saying, is if we do not vote to send this to a special town meeting, that's the end of it?
Or can we?
That's, that's correct.
If we vote to send it to a special town meeting, then it's a town meeting and it's handled by.
And people can ask whatever questions they wish. Mr. Stanton can be there, Mr. Zarba, I mean, certainly we can.
And a vote is taken at that town meeting?
Yes, and then that'll be whether to continue or not continue, and everybody here has the same rights as everybody at this table does at the town meeting.
So Katie, you're saying there's a timeframe, we could vote on this at our next town council meeting?
Oh, I didn't say that. I just want to make it clear for everybody there.
No, I, I kind of agree with.
The way we talk.
I just want to clarify with Dr. Mullin, if we push this off the meeting, the town meeting for October ninth, is that date set in stone, or can we make?
No, we didn't vote on that yet.
You could have, have a different. Well, you're, you're acting on a petition by a property owner at this point. Not, it's not like it came out of the public works department.
Correct.
So if you're going to put off this vote tonight of the council, I mean, it needs to be, because you need more information or something. You could turn this down tonight, and then it wouldn't go to a town meeting, or you could pass it tonight, it will go to a town meeting. But I mean, if somebody needs more information, that's one thing.
I guess I need more information. Like Peter, I, I had a very small copy of this, and I'm very familiar with this whole area here and what it went through, and I just really couldn't assess properly. And I, I would like to investigate a little bit further the potential of harm for the people, and I'm, and I'm not putting this on to the two gentlemen who own the property at all, but these people did buy their homes whenever it was, in, under a certain assumption of this road being a certain way, and this was just abandoned woods and whatever, and a road that was a route, it is. So to change that, it could have impact on them. I don't know that it will, but I think I'd like to investigate this a little bit more.
Okay, I think, I think the way to do it, that's the council's pleasure, I mean, is to table what's on the agenda, but I think when you table, you need to be specific about what information you need as far as from public works and that sort of thing and planning.
I do, I do.
Dr. Mullin?
I think you've given us great information. I'm not, I'm not even questioning the information I received, but there are just sometimes, I think about stuff, and I would like a little time to think about this one. That's all. It's not, not that I feel I didn't get information. I thought you did fine job. I thought.
No, I think it's frank to say.
We have a vote.
You can withdraw, and they can make a motion table.
Right, and we already had one abstention. I mean, that's not to speak for the other council people at all. So you haven't called the vote.
It's your fault.
Do you want to withdraw your motion?
I want to table the motion.
Is that what?
I would like to.
Now you have to withdraw your second.
Would she withdraw?
Yeah, I would like to withdraw it.
I withdraw my second.
Okay. Then a motion to table?
Now, is there specific information that we need, though?
Like to, well, just a moment. I can still move to table this till our next meeting. And I would like to have an opportunity to, I don't need anything, Attorney Graves, I can find the minutes of all of this and research a little bit more and, and take a look at it. I think it is far more important, because as I said, our job here is for everybody out there in TV land. So a lot of these people came to make a case, and I think they deserve an opportunity for us to look at it, just as the gentleman who is the one who put the petition up and your neighbor. I want to see both sides, and I know how to find that information. And anyone here who doesn't know how to find it on our website, the town website, I'm sure Kathy, Cassie, Nettie would be happy to get it for us, right?
So you're tabling these motions until October 9?
I'd like to table it to our next council meeting, which would be October 9.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I don't have to discuss a table, do you? If you want to change the date of the table, that's fine.
You're good? Close in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Close. Okay.
Okay. Move forward to IM 13, motion to approve the charter revision explanatory text. I have a second?
Second. Any discussion?
Okay, this was, sorry. So this was put together, if you remember, the council on August 13th, or maybe it was in July, commissioned, the former charter revision commission, as an advisory panel for the purpose of drafting this. So this was put together by, through my office, with Mr. Smansky, and Mr. De Gregorio, Attorney Taylor, and of course, the expert of all things grammar on the charter, former mayor Furman. And the idea was to follow the statutes, work with the secretary of the state's office, to make sure that people understand what they're voting on, but in a neutrally worded way. After, if the council approves the concept of this tonight, I will get together with Attorney Button, or Attorney Bromley and the secretary of the state's office, who will make sure that this is worded neutrally. This will, like the two explanatory texts that have been approved for the two state constitutional amendments, this will go in with the absentee ballot requests, as well as a large copy of it placed at each polling place, so that people understand if they are voting for this question, what they are, what they are voting for, and if they are voting against this question, what they are voting not to do as part of the charter revision commission.
Any discussion? Dr. Mullin?
Can we go to, towards the back, chapter nine?
Oh, my copy, I'm sorry.
Chapter nine, sheet Dr. Mullin? On this sheet that was in our agenda?
Yeah.
I just want to clarify here, subjects, any appropriations supplemental to the toll on the budget, within excess of one eighth of one mil. It used to be what, one-fifth of one mil? Yeah, well, it was, it concerned a dollar amount, I believe, and the feedback that we got from the charter, or as part of the charter revision commission, was that people wanted amount to go to town meeting if it was a certain level. So working through the finance office, they came up with that figure. That's, that's part of it, was one-fifth, I believe, and now it's one-eighth. Okay. You, you really shouldn't have the $360,000 there, because that's going to change annual. Well, it's on the, on the front of this, it says, well, one mil is in 2018, which is $288 mil, down in the bottom under chapter six, Dr. Mullin. We can, we can repeat it again there, I suppose. I just don't think that number should be there.
I don't, the only, I agree with you, except that when people are voting on it, an eighth of a mil might mean absolutely nothing to anybody. Having the dollar amount there, at least people kind of.
It goes to the dollar amount when they vote, but it shouldn't be a dollar amount in your charter.
Correct, but I think that, you're right, in a charter, you're right, the $360,000, but when people go to vote on this, I think that number's important, so they can. Correct, but I think that, you're right, in a charter, you're right, the $360,000, but when people go to vote on this, I think that number's important, so they can have an idea.
I totally agree, but I just don't think it should be there because it changes.
That was why there's the note of one mil in 2018 being $2.88 million.
Can I make a suggestion, then? So expand that to say, for example, in 2018, the amount would be $360,000.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, you know.
It's for the purpose of identifying, you know, education of all those that were reading it, so it's a good way to do it.
Oh, we did the same thing with one and a half of the mil there.
Yeah.
So 2018.
I, I just think that, and chapter eight, under Board of Finance's role in budget process, the proposed change. Well, as I, as I proposed when we wanted to go through this, my proposal is to eliminate the Board of Finance. So quite frankly, I would eliminate a town budget vote if I could. I would do what Danbury does. They don't have a Board of Finance, they don't have a.
They don't have a town meeting form of government.
Right, they have a whole different form of government. I don't think it's appropriate to send it back to Board of Finance. I think if it gets voted down, comes back here where it is right now, and the town council makes the decision on that. And my reasoning, I'll be, just a second. My reasoning is Board of Finance really should be more of an advisory board than it should be anything else. Because legally, they're not, you know, when the town council says, we're approving this money, Board of Finance doesn't get to say no.
Yes, they do.
They get to say they can do it here or do it there. By statute.
They can turn it down.
They can't totally reject it, because then they become a legislative body.
Dr. Mullin, you're not correct. 7-348 of the statutes and 7068 of the charter does allow the Board of Finance to turn down appropriations requests.
Well, I was reading something on a, what do you call it, Supreme Court of the state of Connecticut years ago said, no, they become the, the executive committee if they turn down what's been approved by the town council.
The Supreme Court case you're referring to was a city of New Haven case, where the Board of Alderman and the Board of Finance serve different, serve the reverse functional roles of where it's served in every other town meeting form of government. The Board of Finance has a fiduciary responsibility under 7-348 of the statutes, and we could argue about whether we think that's good or not, but I mean, this is what's in the charter. The explanatory text is supposed to be describing what the charter is proposing. If you don't think that that's what the charter is proposing, that's one thing, but I mean, this is not to debate the merits or lack thereof of the charter revision.
The decision should lie here, if the people in this.
But this is what's being proposed.
Yeah, and I think it's wrong. Make the decision here.
But, but that's not what the proposed charter revision is.
I know, that's why I disagree with this.
Any other, any other discussion?
Yeah. I always found it interesting that we sit here in the budget deliberations, and we put forth a budget, and we give it to the BOF, and then they change it, and then if it gets, you know, put down, it comes back to us again. It's strange how they can do what they want after we do it, and then if it fails, it comes back to us, and we can put it right back the way we want it. So it's kind of a weird process that has to do it. And I haven't studied enough, but I do kind of understand Board of Finance. It's weird how it goes through a process, and then it comes all the way back to us again. It's, it's a strange circle when it's, when it's, you know, turned down, and then it comes back to us, and we can say, well, we're going to put this back, or back in, or not, or take out, after the BOF did it, so it's, it's kind of a weird system.
Again, I mean, the point, the point of the motion on your agenda, though, I mean, the charter revision is approved revisions, the council has approved revisions, this is just what's being, information being provided to the voters, that's where you're voting.
No, I understand that, man. I'm just saying the whole process seems a little bit out of balance, that's all. It should be more clearer.
Remember that when you go to the polls.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
Item 14, move to approve the library question explanatory, explanatory text.
This was a little bit of a late entry, because.
Second.
This was a little bit of a late entry because I was not sure, I wanted to clarify whether this explanatory text had to go in front of the library board or come here. After some research, it does have to come here, because it is a question on the ballot. So Sally worked pretty hard to get this done today. I, of course, helped as far as the wording was concerned, and will be conversing with the Secretary of the State. After, as I said, after the, the town council has approved something, statute 9-369 does require a county attorney to approve it, too.
Is this going to go to the public?
This will go with, like the charter revision, the two state questions, it will go in every absentee ballot packet, and it will have a poster of it at the polling places. This is what we voted on two weeks ago, right?
No.
No.
We just got that this afternoon.
What's different?
We voted last time to get the text before it went forward, so now who's giving us the text, although I can't find it in my packets, I'm all confused.
It was passed, it was, what was passed out, we don't have to get them in the news. Questions?
This will be at the, at the voting places, Peter. Will it be on the ballot itself?
No, no, it will be at the polling places for people to read before they vote, and it will go in with every absentee ballot.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
Item 15, 15A, move to repeal ordinance, chapter 10, junk.
Any discussion? Is, is we close the special meeting tonight?
Public hearing.
Yep, public hearing, and now the council has the opportunity to take action and repeal this ordinance. Matt, do you like to just kind of opine for a second?
Yeah, just for those that were not here for the public hearing, again, this ordinance and the one in item 15B were written in the days before New Milford had zoning and a zoning commission. What these two ordinances cover is under the purview of the zoning commission because New Milford does have zoning. So before zoning, this would be enforced by the resident state troopers and the Board of Selectmen, which is the precursor to the council. So today, these can't be enforced, even if we try to enforce them, and as I said during the public hearing, our police department looked back, I believe, as far as the early 1980s, and could find no record of anybody even reporting somebody under this or trying to enforce it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
Item 15B, move to repeal the ordinance appendix C, motor vehicle junkyards and businesses.
Second.
And again, I'll explain the same thing. This does not by any means mean that the town is entertaining allowing motor vehicle junkyards all over the place, or anything like that. This ordinance, the way in its current form, zoning can regulate this, this issue, and there's no way to enforce it in its current form, as I said, because it preaches zoning.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Next.
Item 16, mayor's office, move for discussion and possible action regarding the letter of intent from Dakota Properties. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you. So you guys like to come up, Dakota, come up to the podium? So spoke a little bit of public participation concerning the letter of intent, which I have here, basically is outlined earlier in the, the public participation. Do you have any que, does anybody from council have any questions? Should Johnny come up? Katie?
Well, I don't really have a question. I, I think I understand what you said earlier was great, you put it all out there, but I, I do have a comment that I think an appraisal of the property based upon a different use. In other words, multifamily. Last time we had it, I don't know, you had it appraised, or you didn't?
No, the town had it appraised.
Town appraised is, is.
Commercial?
Commercial.
Right. I, I think that considering that that is, you are considering your proposal is for multifamily, I would like to know what the appraisal would be under that.
Okay.
Just, I agree. Curious.
Do we have an idea of the, I know we, which exact folder was discussed before, do we know like how much of the market value, or for holding that?
Told you.
So it'll be 75% two-bedroom, 25% one-bedroom. It'll be a mixed income, so there'll be a few market rate apartments, and then there'll be a mix. The actual mix won't be known until we go to apply for state funding through CHAFRA.
You say, you say a few, so it's a small percentage are actually market rate, because I know the state statute for, for housing only, it only requires like, is it a third that are affordable, and the rest can be market to bypass the, the local zoning regulations?
Yeah, it depends on the, so if you go through like, you go to the bottom of the rung, and it's a 20%, that's vouchers, and it's 20, 25% at 20%, and then there's another category that is 50%, or 40% at 50% of AMI, average median income, which is established by HUD. It has nothing to do with the market-based rents. It's, HUD establishes it every year. And then there's 50% at 60%, and then there's, I believe, a category of 20% to 80%. So it all depends upon ultimately whether it's us or someone else doing workforce housing or affordable housing. It's how the pro forma works out based upon the amount of income coming in, anticipated expenses, and how it'll score out with state funding. And then that kind of floats into, okay, so how many market-based units can we have, how many at 80%, how many at 60, how many at 40, in order to maximize the scoring, which sets how much money is available from the state?
I guess, I guess my concern is, you know, when this does go to vote to the town, how much of your development is going to be set in stone at that point, so people actually know what they're voting on? Because, you know, normally with, with affordable housing, that's the one thing that people get nervous about, is there, is, once they say it's affordable housing, the town has a lot less control, especially if you're within the sewer and septic, because, you know, that's one of the few things that you can control, how many people are going to be there. So, you know, it would be my concern is, is if it's still an idea when the town goes to voting their property, it's going to be tough to sell it, and then we don't know. Because, you know, as we see, every time, you know, I was on planning, every time an affordable housing comes up, all the emotions come out because of all the negative connotation of affordable housing. So, I mean, that, that would be my one suggestion or, or hope, is that before we actually vote on whether this is going to happen, we want to have a pretty set, set plan, you know, set plan, so we know exactly what's going to happen. Because, you know, it is our town, we want to make sure that we all take care of it.
I think a part of that to address, there is lots of concerns, you know, conceptually, everybody want, understands that they need affordable housing in their town. But as soon as it comes into our neighborhood, your neighborhood, the emotions run high, and it becomes a very difficult topic for everyone. And that's really part of education, because a lot of what's out there is a misconception based upon affordable housing, the, the term affordable housing. So the industry has now gone to a term called workforce housing. They're similar, they're the same. If you go on any kind of site and, and look for the definition of both, it's clouded, they're both the same. But one's more marketable than another, and it all comes down to educating. It, it, it comes down to having conversations like this to say, what is your concern? What is the question you really have? Some people say, well, affordable housing affects the market for my single-family home in the neighborhood, and that's completely false. There's so many statistics out there that say it's quite the opposite. There's another, and it's actually been brought up in this town. I mean, I've had lots of conversations with a lot of different people, and they said, well, it's a burden on our school district. Well, the fact is, is that Barton House has five students in your school district. So the, the gain that you have, the benefit of providing affordable housing, whether it's workforce or affordable, to your community, far exceeds any of the negative comments that have come out of it. So it's, it's about education, it's about having conversations, about ultimately deciding what type of town we have an investment like no other in this town. We're here for a, contractually for 15 years, but really, our funding agreements are 30 to 50 years. We are vested. So to come back into, to be invited to by your mayor and other people in this town to say, we need you for another development, we're making a serious commitment for another 30 to 50 years. So we're not going anywhere. So, you know, when you decide affordability versus, or, you know, mixed-use housing like we're proposing versus market rate, the market rate guy is going to build and get out. We build, and then we have to maintain, and then we get audited every single year to say, what services are we providing for the people that, that are tenants? And if we don't maintain those standards, we're penalized. So it's a huge commitment.
And I think what you did with Barton Commons is wonderful, and I have several clients who live there. You just answered part of my question. You have five, only five children in school from Barton Commons. What is the percentage now of what we would call workforce in Barton Commons?
Again, that comes down to how we define workforce versus affordable. There is really not, what my point is, there's no industry acceptable definition of what is workforce versus affordable.
Let me change it. Well, how many, how many of the units are market rate?
I don't believe any.
Not one?
I don't, I don't, I could be wrong, but I don't believe at Barton that we have any, and again, I could be wrong, there's.
I think they're all deep respected.
Yeah.
Okay. Good, thanks.
Walter?
Let me be very short. I'm all in favor of Dakota Properties. Give them the ball. This East Street School has been a millstone for us for years and years and years. Let's cut it away from our neck. I'm in favor of the letter of intent.
There was a couple of comments made. First of all, there's a historic structure on that property, so we have to comply and cooperate with the state historic agency. And we had to do that at Barton House. We built one, a renovation in Cat Bab and Hartford, same thing. Nothing we're going to do, it's going to be under the, their umbrella. So that's very important. Secondly, in order to submit an application with the state for funding, we have to provide an internal appraisal, which if I were in your shoes, I'd want a third-party appraisal, just like you already did. That showed, you know, that asset, the highest and best use for that asset's a million six, and that's what we've provided, except our, actually, our letter of intent will exceed your appraised value for that property. So we would have to do an appraisal that suffices to the state standard, but we also have to provide a marketing study. And there was a comment here that, you know, it's to your benefit to have a marketing study to say, what's the highest and best use, what is that asset, what can you do with that asset? We have to do that and much, much more in order to make an application with the state for funding, just to keep that in mind.
From a historical point of view, how stringent are the rules? Because obviously, that building has some historical significance.
It's significant, and what we've represented in our LOI is that we would retain the historic, the exterior historic significance, and that goes down to the windows. There was an opinion that was put out by Pete, he was very adamant in our first meeting, and we said, okay, we'll retain those windows. So the look of that structure, it's going to be a serious commitment. I mean, you guys mentioned that it has sunk, and, you know, there's a soils issue, there's asbestos, all this, that becomes our problem. And that's, and when we made that offer, we, we did it with our eyes open and said, you know, we put a number, 300,000, but really, internally, we're thinking it's a half a million dollars to a million dollars. And that becomes our problem.
I'm good with your answer.
So.
How big is the project? I know we saw.
Yeah, I was going to ask. How many, how many apartments are you projecting?
So we're hoping, and this is also. So we're hoping, and this is all subject to town approval, that, that you need to know that because we can't do anything without a zoning change, we can't do anything without getting a permit. So these numbers are in, in state of flux. But ideally, if we had our preference, we would like to have eighty units. That consists of twenty units in the historic building along with a community space. And then two thirty unit buildings, if you want to know the look and et cetera. I would, I would encourage you to go to thirty-four East Street, the back building. It would look just like that, three story structure, walk up, but you'd have elevators. So now you start talking about ADA, you start talking about although it's not age restricted, you know, we're not going to say senior housing. Seniors will be able to live there without a problem because there will be elevators in both buildings. Not in the historic building, but in the two new buildings. That's best case. We're really, what really probably will happen is we may only get fifteen units out of the historic building because we don't think the setup will be able to get twenty units. And, and we have to by state law or state funding arrangements, we have to provide a community center. The target is seven hundred and fifty square feet, but in our developments, we typically go up to about fifteen hundred square feet. Because we like to have a leasing office, we like to have a gym, we like to have a community area. So we usually exceed the state minimum. So when you take all that in, the numbers are going to probably get squeezed.
So what were the number you used for like for resident, what do you use, like two point something? How do you, how do you figure that out for, if you're going to have seventy-five, you're looking at a hundred and eighty people, two hundred and something people?
There is a, I think, I'm not, you know, he probably can answer that better than I. I think the state CHAF is like one point two or one point four. So, you know, you're going to have, if we get eighty units, assuming eighty units, you got sixty-two bedroom and you got twenty-one bedroom, twenty-one bedroom. So, you know, I think when they apply their averages, I think it's like one point four. Parking is typically.
Going to have two spots per unit, is that correct?
No, well, we usually pro forma at one point five. However, that site's an unusual site because on the backside of that site, it slopes down into wetlands area. So there's some extended setbacks. So placing two thirty unit buildings on the backside of that and retaining a one point five. But we have pressure. And the pressure is, is that we've represented to Pete that we would allow for event parking. So the parking spaces, we still have to provide one point five parking spaces for the tenants. But then we would have to come back to you and you guys would have to say, well, geez, theater has, I'm making a number of twenty-five events a year, et cetera, and they, the theater is two hundred and fifty people. We're going to have to factor that in because, you know, if there's two hundred spaces for those twenty events and our tenants can't have parking, we can't have them. So we have to weigh all of that into the site.
Does that blueprint with three buildings sit into enough parking for all of it?
We believe it does. But in the due diligence period, we'll be able to come back to the board and say, okay, here's the actual layout. And this is how it all fits. And we, at the end of the day, we may not, we're not going to get over eighty. And, you know, we're hoping at least seventy-five. But at the end of the day, it might be sixty-five due to site constraints.
Katie?
Just as a curiosity question, I don't know if I've done, but, you know, the way the building looks now, the way it's always been, it's grass in the front. There's a walkway, but it's grass that faces East Street. Would you, it just dawned on me as you're talking about parking, would you make part of that a parking area?
No, what I've seen and what we've played with, and I'm not the site guy, okay? My, my background is law and business. We have architects and civil. But I have yet to see anything nor been part of any conversation that said, we put parking in front. It's, obviously, the historic building, the parking would be in the center. And then the back two buildings would go as far back as possible, given the setbacks required by the town.
I'm just curious. When you started talking about the number of spaces, I started thinking about the front yard there. Thank you.
Can you refresh my memory, how many units are in Barton House? Which is lovely, by the way.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
And for those that you don't know, the Barton House, the front house was a historic building. And we had to move it to one side in order to build the two buildings and then move it back while abating the asbestos and all of that. In this, in this development, we wouldn't have to do that, obviously, but we would have some structural issues if it's, as you say, sunk on one corner or you may have, you did. Sorry, doctor.
So when you, with all that in mind, that was helpful with about the asbestos. So when you compare the per unit acquisition cost, what you paid for the Barton House property to East Street, is East Street higher or lower? You said business guy, you just opened up Pandora's box for me.
I came prepared to answer that question because Pete beat me up with it.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, he was doing his job. So in Barton House, we paid one point one million dollars. And that included plans and permits, okay? So we have offered a million six. Our estimate on the environmental on the low side is three fifty. Our plans and permits would add another three hundred. And now you're comparing apples to apples. So we'd be in at fifty East Street at two point three million, divide that by eighty, it'd be twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty a unit. At Barton House, we were at a million one divided by thirty-eight would be twenty-eight thousand, nine forty-seven. If we get in seventy-five units, we're closer to twenty-nine thousand per unit. And that's on the low side on the environmental, which I think is closer to, when Mark and I met with Pete, we, we gave a number between a half a million and a million, which is consistent with our other developments on, in the case.
Sorry, so I missed a little bit of what you said because I was doing my own little math here. So one point, I heard somebody say one point six earlier on the LOI versus the numbers you just threw out. Give me a delta of eight hundred thousand. So is there eight hundred thousand of asbestos?
So, no. So on the million six, you have to add a broker's fees, which we are going to pay, that's fifty grand. You have to add that in. And you add the three hundred and fifty thousand of environmental, which is low, and the plans and permits at three hundred, making our total for fifty East Street, two million, three hundred thousand divided by eighty is twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty a unit. At Barton House, we paid a million one, but that included permitting and plans. And that equates to, if you divide it by thirty-eight units, twenty-eight thousand, nine forty-seven.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure, again, my part of due diligence is making sure the taxpayers get the most for their money. So we talked about appraisals and all of that, I just want to make sure it's utmost to have.
The key is the appraisal, you know, that is, Pete and I spent a little time and his first question to me was, are you seeking tax abatement? And I said, no. But what we are seeking, and I'm going to give you a little history because it's important. Because all of the towns in Connecticut are pressed for budgets. You know, your budgets are being squeezed. You have to look to property owners and say, how can we increase our tax base? And so with market based appraisals, you know, you take a market rents and you mul- you deduct your operating expenses. You can do your rent rolls and your actual operating expenses and you divide it by a cap rate. Cap rates today range at five to five and a half. And that's your assessed, becomes your assessed value, multiplied by seventy percent, and then you apply your mill rate. With affordable housing, the state of Connecticut has come down in the courts consistently in favor of affordable housing. And there are towns that are pushing back, but they failed. And, and our track record is Brookfield sued us, or we sued them because they misappraised the property. What they do is they try to assess affordable, on affordable housing, they assess market based rents. And there's a delta of several millions of dollars. At Laurel Hill and Brookfield, they tried to increase our taxes by a hundred thousand, even though we had entered into an understanding with the town that said, this is going to be your taxes every year. A year later, they came back with an extra hundred grand. So in the LOI, the fine print is, my proposal, is that I want an independent appraiser to say, look, here's the value of that asset when built and stabilized. This is going to be the rents charged, which has been submitted to the state. We can only charge those rents, so that's the guarantee. Here's our estimate of expenses, which will be consistent with Barton House. And both of us, Dakota and the town, will say, okay, based upon what's going to be there, the affordable workforce housing rents, this is going to be the value of that asset. And we're going to pay a hundred percent of our tax liability on that value. Then there is no disagreement, there is no hidden ball, there's, everything's an open book. That's what I'm seeking in that LOI, that's what I'm trying to get to. Because these numbers are so tight on an operating level. We have to prove to the state, the, the building that we're going to build and maintain for fifteen or fifty years is self-sustained. So every number has to be precise. We cannot afford that there be a tax hit that we didn't anticipate in the pro forma. Because it is so tight and, and we're audited in the state of Connecticut, we're audited every single year by the state. So we don't have the flexibility. So if we go into this deal, we want to know what is our liability and we will meet our liability a hundred percent. But we want to know what that is. That's a hundred percent of what that LOI states and what we're seeking on the valuation of the asset. What's fair to the town, what's fair for us, based upon how the courts in Connecticut have interpreted how to apply the tax code to affordable housing. That's all we're asking.
I have two more things. And I apologize, I got to jump ahead on the agenda a little bit. How many units are being proposed at Pigler Hill?
How? How many, how many units are being proposed at Pigler?
Oh, a hundred.
Hundred, Pigler Hill, okay. And then I just want to say this, and I know I'm opening up Pandora's box, but I'm going to say it. I know you're not surprised. Mike Sinello talked earlier about opportunity cost. And I think the elephant in the room is, for me anyway, if we move tonight on this LOI, then we've got to find a home for the people who are now in that building. There are big proponents that want to put them in another space in town that's being analyzed by a community committee to see if that's the right place for them. So the decision to me is not as simple as, do we believe in affordable housing? Is this the right thing? And is Dakota Partners the right company to help our town? I think you guys do a great job. But then the other question for me is representing the taxpayers is, is taking the one point six today plus the taxes versus giving up the potential to do things a little bit differently with buildings, maybe sell a different property for a lot more money? Which one's the better thing for the taxpayers? And I don't know the answer to that yet.
It's a great question. And my humble opinion is that when you deal in opportunity cost, there's direct and indirect. So the direct is simple. It's a million six, you're not, you have no income coming in off that property. It's also the tax, annual tax revenue that you'll receive on that building, which will be defined by state code. The indirect would be, you're bringing in, let's call it eighty units, call it a hundred people. Those back hundred people or a hundred and twenty-five people are spending money in your town. Another indirect cost is that your town now is providing a defined number of units for your teachers and other people that work in this town to live in this town, to invest in your town. That is an economic value that's hard to put a dollar incentive to. They become your community. We are building an active living community. That's what our mission is. And that investment in your town provides from athletic teams to participation in schools, to participation here tonight, to building religious communities and active living communities for seniors. That's all part and parcel to it. That's the indirect benefit. And that's hard to quantify. But you have to have a mix in your town. And part of that mix is people who can afford to live there. And that's, that's instrumental, I mean, it's strategic.
I don't, I don't disagree. And I love your line of thinking and I, I hope the community center committee is listening because I've built many a business case looking at the different opportunities in front of a corporation and deciding which one was the best one, including both indirect and direct costs. And I don't think we have all the data yet to be able to say that. But, you know, again, I appreciate what you've done in the community and I think all the things that you just said about how to weigh the pros and cons are absolutely correct. I just don't think, at least for me, I'm not there yet.
But the other part is the direct cost to the town if you do keep, because part of the three proposals Pete's articulated is, one, do we go with Dakota? Two, do we go with another developer on a different concept? And he's had conversations with them, although they haven't put an LOI on the table. And the third is, does the town take the responsibility? And, and you have forty-five thousand square feet of unused space, but then you have a lot of people that got to be moved around and where do you put all of these people? But in, in order to utilize East Street, you have asbestos and lead based paint. You can't put townspeople in something that's going to be a, a situation of liability. So you're going to have to take care of that problem. And I'm going to tell you, based upon our experience, it's not a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment. It, all said and done, by the time you do all of your studies and your engineering work and cost overruns and all of this, you're going to be pregnant, half a million to a million dollars. And then you're going to have to have relocation costs and ADA expenses and, you know, roof issues and all of these things you're talking about in your schools, you're going to have in that building. With Dakota's proposal, you cut your liability off and you immediately, it becomes an incoming, an income asset, income producing asset. So there's a lot of direct and indirect expenses that I don't think are giving adequate air in this discussion.
I, I think we, I would hope that we actually have a fair understanding that all of those things exist, not only with this building, but with the other building that is the next best alternative. So duly noted. And we always get, we always underestimate and are overly optimistic about asbestos and lead paint and roofs and the structural things.
Katie?
My first question goes back to the tax. You made a comment that, and I know sort of what happened there in Brookfield and with the lawsuit and everything. So your formula that you use, that is what's mandated by the state?
Yeah, so Brookfield, yes.
Okay. That's, I, I, it doesn't matter what happened in Brookfield, I just want to know, because at first I thought you said it wasn't. That was your vision of the right, fair way to do it. But, so the amount of tax that we'll be able to assess to the property, if you were to do the eighty units, would be determined by a formula that the state agrees to. So it wouldn't matter if we, if our assessor said, no, it's worth more because now the inflation or whatever has, has brought in a higher percentage of rental. We wouldn't be able to do that, is that what you're saying?
What, the answer is, is that the assessed value of our property per Connecticut is based upon the actual rents received. So that would be.
Not, right, I got that earlier, yeah.
Affordable workforce and all the different units. So it's actually from the books. And then the expenses against that revenue is the actual expenses. And then you go through the same calculation as you do in any other property.
Okay. Is that how you did it for Barton Commons?
Yes.
So the amount of tax you. So, the amount of tax you've been paying the town is based on that same formula?
Yes, and the town is trying to get market-based rents in an affordable housing complex, and the result's going to be the same in New Milford as we had in Brookfield. We had the number-one appraiser in the state come out and do the appraisal per Connecticut code, and he said it's X, and that's what Dakota was willing to pay. And Brookfield and New Milford are trying to get market-based rents, and the result's going to be the same here as it is in Brookfield. So, I want to end it by saying, "Let's just do it right on the front end."
All right, you answered that. Okay, and then you make a good comment about, "We do want to invest in our town, obviously. We're not sitting here hours and hours and doing this because we don't." But there is something you said about, you know, teachers and some other people who work here need places to live. I deal with people who work, but they have very limited assets, and their income is constrained. These are the people who are really running the nuts and bolts of our town, and they really don't have a lot of options here, except rentals of some of the condos and things. But I deal with a few people and know them very well, who live in Barton Commons. And I'm just going to say this out here, since you're here, I'll be honest. That, it was all good when they moved in, but their rent has gone up. And to the extreme that I found it almost impossible to believe that it started at this and now is up to this, after, what's it been, a couple of years? You've been there three years, I don't even know. How is that determined? Is that still determined by the state?
So, how the maximum rents are calculated in affordable housing, you should take the average median income that is outlined by HUD. And so, I don't know what New Milford is, and I apologize for that.
It's high enough.
But Brookfield, I think it was like $96,000 or something like that. And then they deduct the cost of utilities. So, you take that median income, you divide it by 12, and you take, by HUD standards and Litech World, you can only go up to 30% of their income. So, you multiply that AMI by 30%. So, let's just say it's $2,000 a month, to use a number. You deduct the utilities that are estimated for that unit in that complex. And that is the maximum amount that can be charged to a tenant at whatever their calculation is. So, it's either 80%, 60%, 50%.
But how do you change it from the day you opened the doors and there was a line of people?
So, that's the maximum amount. In some of our developments, Barton House being one, Laurel Hill, there was about 18 units that were this way. We charge less than the maximum amount going in. And over a period of time, we looked at what our expenses were, and we said, "You know, we're 3%, 6% under." And so, we went to the state mandated, there's a maximum amount, increase their rent. So, you can't go over that, but you also can't go over the maximum.
Well, I'm just making the point to you that I'm all for giving everybody who wants to live in this town a place to live. I'm really all for giving everybody a living wage, but that's not for us to discuss tonight. But I think it's, I mean, I'd love to see the teachers living there, but the fact of life is, you don't, we don't have a place for all those other people. So, I'm just trying to get my head around how this all works. Because while I'd like to see housing for all workforce, there are some people in our workforce that, you know, they're sitting in this room right now, and we work with them, and they're friends of ours, who can't afford to live in workforce housing. So, I was just getting some education on how you figure that out.
The answer to your question really goes to his question earlier. And if I were on your seat, I would be very involved and active. And after the LOI is executed and the PNS is executed, that you maintain participation in...
You mean by sitting on the Affordable Housing Board?
No, just because, without saying it, this is a private-public partnership. So, we're in partnership with you. Whether, however we want to construct it, it's a partnership. So, part of that partnership goes to his question is, Jim, how many units are market-based? How many are 80, how many are 60, and 40, and 20? And get the right mix that works for us, but also works for you? Because you know how many teachers that you need to find places to live. That's easy for you to...
And how many bus drivers?
And how many bus drivers, and how many people at McDonald's, and how many, you know, and all of that. Based upon that number, the, what we're required to do to fill a unit is beyond your wildest... It's tougher to get into one of our units than it is to buy a house.
Well, I learned that from the people who got there. So, okay, I understand that. Thank you.
As far as tenants, you've had really good luck in partnering, as far as getting quality people in and all that. You had no issues with some of... As I said, you know, the stereotype of affordable housing, you've had really good luck with the tenants in there? Have they evicted any because of this?
We've had a couple of evictions, but out of 38 units, we have a waiting list of over 350 people. The extent to which a person has to provide documentation to qualify, like I said, is more difficult than buying a house. They have to be employed, they have to have two years of tax returns, they have to have references, their credit scores have to be of a certain degree, their interviews, their applications. Everything is checked, their bank statements are checked by the property manager. But then it's audited at Holkeen and double-checked, and then it's audited by the state. So, to get in, you're getting the highest caliber of tenants, who fit the model that I said, you know, this partnership needs to come to an understanding and agree to.
So, I just had my last question, which I said I had too, was, have you, when you, I know you did a great job of Barton Commons, and so there's East Street, right there, the East Street School building, Florida Ed building. Did you ever approach our mayor or consider the other building, the elephant-in-the-room building? The Pettibone building? You can put a lot of units in there.
Honestly, I did...
You have a lot of parking, too.
I know. Honestly, we didn't. We did look at Pigler Hill, did I pronounce that right?
Yeah.
And we were, we made an offer on that, but after discussion, that became more difficult.
No, I'm talking about the Pettibone building that exists. Oh, I see, you're going to back into it, okay, go ahead.
So, we did look at Pigler. If you have another building that, you know, you want us to look at, we would look at, and we would look at it from the eye of what will score. So, you know, we look at a development and say, you know, proximity transportation, QCT, there's about 15 different factors we look at to say, "That'll score high enough to get state-funded."
So, you never did a assessment?
No, we were never directed there. Our...
I'd be happy to give you the directions if you wanted to take a look.
I mean, my first outreach was, "You have an inventory of real estate. What do you, what does the town think would be appropriate?" And what came out of it was East Street and Fieger. And then there was one by the river, and that is in a 500-year flood plain that I can't fix. I can't...
Can't change it.
Yeah, you have to step out on the dry land, and we couldn't make that go away, so...
No, you know, Pettibone, we really, I mean, having apartments in downtown where people can walk to use our downtown, if he's, you know, his claims are true, and he's getting quality people, that helps our downtown. I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of what we're trying to create, is the businesses downtown having more people go to them, so they can sustain themselves, so we can sustain the downtown as the character of the farm. What do we, what do we actually decide today? We're just, I mean...
So, tonight, we're discussing...
The motion is to take action regarding the LOI.
So, tonight, we're discussing the LOI. Some of the things we uncovered is getting an appraisal, right? So, we can see the value. There's still some questions.
I mean, I think it's a neat idea, but I'm not sure I'm ready to say yes right now.
Right. So, one of the things we can do is talk about an appraisal, getting an appraisal, see what the value is, true value. And then any other questions that the council members have, we can give it back, and then have them come back maybe to the next meeting and talk more about it. Is that...
My job is to push the ball forward. Excuse me for interjecting. But it's a long process. So, you know, if you were, and you're not, but if you were to decide tonight, we wouldn't be putting an application in until next fall to be approved for the following year. So, that, to your question about, there's a lot of logistics that has to happen within the town. This LOI and our process, given the state requirements, gives everybody all the time. So, you know, we have a 90-day due diligence. Put in that, you'll want an appraisal, you're looking to get a marketing study and all these other things. That's all synergistic to what we're trying to accomplish. We have to get all the same data. But our proposal is, we bear the cost. And your other option is, you bear the cost, with no guarantee on, to his point, on how much 20, how far 20,000 is going to go.
Moving along, is he going to come back? Is that what, okay, let's move along. By my count, there are seven more items on this agenda. It's 10 o'clock. I've been here since 6:30.
Me, too.
So, we want to withdraw the motion?
Yes.
I'd like to withdraw my motion on 16-1A.
Excuse me, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Walter, you got to draw your second.
You got a what?
Draw your second.
I redraw my second. I redraw my third and fourth and fifth.
Next, Hal, come on up. We're going to talk about the... The historic property...
Right, right.
All right, Hal.
Do you want to address that item?
So, on B, just so everybody knows, on 16B, can we discuss that? That's with our preservation story grants that we already...
Do you want one of that? Oh, okay, sure, Matt.
Okay.
Stephanie got it?
Yes. Okay, so, we're moving on to number two, the Pigler Hill property.
So, I have a motion?
I had Hal come in, as we received an LOI on this particular property. So, before Hal...
You don't want a motion? Let's call him for a motion.
Sure.
We were talking about more than just Pigler. We're talking about retail development.
Correct. So, as you can see on this, for the council, you can see on this map, there's the private piece that's on the bottom, that is the Danbury Road piece. And then the town owns the Pigler piece, which abuts it on the top piece. So, Hal had come in and given the town a LOI on the town piece.
That's correct.
He could speak briefly to the private piece that we have no, really no saying.
Well, private piece, oh, sorry.
Your full name?
I'm sorry. Full name is Al Kurfes, K-U-R-F-E-S.
What company are you with?
Cool, little bank commercial. And I'm involved with the other gentleman that you just heard. So, if you have any questions about that, I think they're doing a wonderful thing, or trying to do a wonderful thing there. And one of the things that stuck in my mind on the appraisal was, I know the appraisal was done for assisted living, for that particular project. But that was the highest and best use indicated in the appraisal. Appraisals for things like this, as compared to assisted living, aren't really that much different. Just a point.
So, we could talk a little bit about the project itself? You're looking to do kind of a combination for both people?
Combination, we're talking mixed use, which in most towns is a very desirable thing. It would be desirable for the retail tenants as well, simply because they have a built-in market close by. And in fact, there would be a connection between the two developments. We're talking about a large tenant, an anchor tenant, of 60, 65,000 square feet, with inline or pad properties next to it or near it. And this is, this is a very rough layout, by the way, I should tell you. We don't have accepted LOI, so we haven't gone into a lot of engineering work and that sort of thing. This was done in-house, but it represents, in general, what we're trying to do. It'll probably change somewhat. We're talking about the apartments being only 100 units on, it was 18 acres or something like that, which is like five units per acre, very, very light use. Of course, there's a lot of wetlands there. And we're probably talking, as far as I understand, about nine acres of buildable land. But even there, it's very low use, it's like 11 units per acre. I've been very involved in Brookfield in apartment development, mixed-use development. Until December, I was chairman of the Economic Development Commission there for 10 years. And we have a number of units. I know the question came up on density. In Brookfield, the density runs below of 11 units per acre. Now, it's a total acreage, it doesn't carve out the wetlands, it's just total acreage. 11 units to about 29 units per acre. And they all fit, they've all been approved. So, you know, everybody has looked at that very carefully. We have a very light use here. And we would like to have a market rate development. I understand that there is a plan afoot in town to do a mixed-use type of new overlay type of plan, and we would go with that if that was the case. That usually costs for about 20% of affordable, so I'll call it affordable. But it's based on usually the income level of the area of the town, rather than the state income. With IG, the 8-30G, which is the affordable housing, which requires 30%, you have to go with the state income, which means that the rents are lower than they would be with this kind of plan. We plan to do a quality type of development, clubhouse, a pool, some walking trails. And it should be a pride to the town when it's finished. As I said, as far as the front is concerned, the people who are doing the development, and I gave you their backgrounds, they would be basically looking to do the mixed use because that benefits them. If you were not to go along with the mixed use, they would probably still build, but it would be much better to do it this way. Where we are at the front piece is, we have a commitment from a large tenant, the anchor tenant, and that's the key to doing retail. We would basically want to do that as an entrance off of Danbury Road with perhaps secondary entrances. In fact, you probably need secondary entrances, we haven't figured that out because of the wetland situation. And that's pretty much it. I mean, I gave you a lot of detail, yes?
No, I'm sorry, I was for him. You finish what you're saying.
No, I'm really, there's not much to say about it. As far as the front portion is concerned, we haven't done the contract yet, it's be done any day. It's an accepted LOI from the people who live there, who have the property. And as far as the back portion is concerned, the actual offer was 1.6 million, which was the price you had on it prior to when you had a broker handling it. And that broker is no longer involved with the land. So, you wouldn't have the expense of a broker, because they would be paying you directly.
Kate?
Is everything that you've colored in, the little red square here in the front, and the yellow 18,000-square-foot rental space, retail space, is that something you would be doing?
I would be doing?
Well, I don't...
Oh, yeah, we would build, we would...
Yeah. There's nothing there now and something's going to be built there.
To be built there.
Okay.
And it wouldn't be that necessarily in that way.
Yeah, just, I get that.
Because we did this internally.
I understand. I understand. No, the residential, the rental units, it looks like it'd be a lovely, quiet area up there. So the largest piece is what I want to ask about. It'll be one merchant?
One merchant for that particular building?
The 65,000?
Yes. And that's the anchor.
I guess it is. That's my question.
I mean, some of these other buildings might not be floating in space like this. They might be attached to that building.
I understand. It's been, I know it's got a lot of wetlands there and everything, so.
Mike?
Oh, I don't know. If you needed something for a meeting, I have the whole project already since we tried to do this 10 years ago and the town loses it down. I think it's a great idea. I think that, I think it's a great idea. My dad likes to foster.
You know, it's a great, it's a great income to the town because we're talking about, and Pete asked me what was the value of this. And we figured, and it's hard to figure before we have everything put together, but we figured something like 55 to 60 million dollars to the town, I mean, investment in the town. And of course, you'd have the actual people that are building it, you'd have the taxes afterwards. It'd be a big impact.
I don't suppose there's any chance of you saying who the merchant would be?
No. I'm not authorized to do that, you know.
Well, you take that with a grain of salt.
I just asked. I just asked.
I remember sitting in this same room when they were building Litchfield Crossing. Because I was involved because I live in the neighborhood. And it got to the point to where they were picking out the facade of Target.
Wow.
And they pulled out. So I don't think anything's locked in.
I was the broker at the time.
Yeah. And I'm familiar, and it still sits almost 60%.
Yeah, they had 288,000 and nowhere near that. We had, this happened in the fall of 2008. We had Target as the anchor tenant.
Yes.
And a whole bunch of other LOIs, okay, which are non-binding.
Right.
And then September, October of 2008 hit. Everything went away. I had two leases that were already signed. One was AT&amp;T and one was the bank, Union Savings Bank. So they had no choice.
Right.
But they're paying $40 a square foot, triple net, okay? When their 10 years is over, they're going to be asking for a big reduction on that.
I'm very familiar because I lived behind it. The residents behind here have had to deal with dirt and dust and garbage and debris and empty properties for years that were promised that they'd be there. So I understand that you might have a commitment, but until I see something put up, I'm always going to be reserved about that as well. So you never could predict the future. We don't know what tomorrow brings or what will happen like 2008.
Really, really good. Trueisms in this business.
Right.
I'm making an assumption that these are not final designs, but there's a few things in the design I do have concerns about. The entrance on Pigler Road?
Yep.
That's a very steep road. I don't know how you're doing an entrance on that road.
We would probably have to have an entrance, more than one entrance, of course. You'd have to have a main entrance and an emergency exit. Where it goes is up to the engineers. Maybe we'd have to come in from Fort Hill Road. I don't know.
Secondly, from the retail space heading out to Danbury Road?
Yep.
There is a street there that has been blocked off. It's part of Town View Drive.
Mm-hmm.
I hope that continues to be blocked off. That's right where the coffee shop is, Starbucks. I'm familiar, my first house was on Town View Drive. And there was originally a street coming from Danbury Road right onto Town View Drive. And the residents at the time requested that it be blocked off and just have a cul-de-sac there. And it ends up being a very nice residential neighborhood that way. If that were to be opened up, it would destroy that nice little neighborhood.
Another cul-de-sac decision.
Well, that's really, that...
Well, I know exactly what you mean.
They do not want, they do not want that touched. You have to... The other thing though is come out of Danbury Road. They don't want both-way traffic. They're only going to want you
Yeah, turn the one way.
staying on that one side.
There's a vacant piece up front here and it's marked up. If there is a possibility, I don't know if we're going to run into wetlands or not, the possibility of coming in through that, the edge of that vacant piece as well, or as an alternate main entrance.
All right. Just, I don't mean to belabor the point, but there's just a few things in the design that just bother me. I mean, having a big retail space and then be able to exit a retail space and go through a residential neighborhood just doesn't make me feel warm and fuzzy.
That would be, the access from the residential neighborhood is the important thing. Not necessarily to go from the retail into the residential.
But you can. If you go one way, you can go the other, unless it's a one-way drive. I'm not a big fan of that. And lastly, I'm so concerned about retail. Retail is just slowly withering in this country. I'd rather see a hotel there, but...
You know, it's a funny thing. I'm talking about hotels. I was once asked many years ago to list the Pigler property and to try to sell it to a hotel. And I had to decline because it is the worst possible location for a hotel.
Of course, we have some terms.
Mike?
Well, we could use a hotel.
Oh, I know you could. I know you could. But it has to be near a major thoroughfare.
But you don't have a hotel who wants to do it and you have a big box store.
So we have other...
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We have other questions. So we want to get to Hal. So Hal can get back to us.
I think he's answered, I mean, what you can give us. What's the timeframe for your client?
We would like to move as fast as possible, of course. It's a good economy right now and we'd like to take advantage of it. As far as, the only thing that we're looking for from the town is the Pigler property to have a signed LOI. And then, of course, we could start working on the engineering to bring that alive. And it has to go through approvals. Everything has to go through approvals if it happens. I look at this simply in every step of the way.
So have you done an LOI for this, the complete piece?
No, the LOI is for the front piece, but that's separate. We don't need to go through the town.
So would you envision that you would do just that in any situ, any, in a situation?
Just the retail?
No, the other way around.
Just the residential? I think we'd prefer to do them both. I can't answer any questions.
No, I understand why you would.
But our review is the residential piece because that's our range, correct? And we have an LOI for that.
Correct. The other piece isn't, the town is the city and stuff.
An LOI is basically not a legal commitment on the part of the town. It's just a, hey, let's go ahead and see what we come up with.
And have executed any LOI.
Yeah.
And if we didn't, if it never came to be that you were interested in the retail, we'll call it the retail area, does that diminish, I'm just talking out loud, how would that diminish our ability? I mean, we haven't marketed this property very well. And how many years have we owned it? When did you want to do it?
Oh, yeah, 10 years.
And 10 years ago? So at least 10...
Probably longer than that.
Right, that's what I'm thinking. So, no, I'm not saying you are thinking that way, but I'm just thinking out loud. It's part of our job here is to say, then we have this piece of property. Of course, you are taking the wetland area over there. Just saying, what would, if it never came to be, I mean, your client could change their mind. It's happened to us before. Happened to you before, I'm sure, more than I know.
Many times, many times, yeah. Basically, we, at first, we wanted to do the front. And then I brought to the developers' attention the fact that there was some land in the back. And they liked the idea of mixed use, so that's why we're there.
No, I think those could be very nice ones.
My only fear, which is not, any of this is still trying to fill up. Litchfield Crossing is head-creeping and someone else makes that job even harder, but that's not even...
Well, retail is not dead, okay? Retail is going through an adaption right now. I've been involved in a lot of different, you know, retail developments. And I think retail was somewhat overbuilt. And retail is now adapting by providing an experience, which it was not before. It was just go in, buy something and get out. So I think that they will come to some sort of a measure with the other type of retailing, the online retailing, and they'll each find their own level. And in fact, online retailing is starting to open retail outlets, showrooms. There's some sort of a good relationship between the two. And so that constantly changes. It'll never, never stay the same.
All right, so...
And this has to also be rezoned?
Yes. So we have, I'm going to make the motion that I didn't make, move to take action regarding the purchase of the Pigler Hill property and the LOI that, I'm sorry, your first name is Hal or?
Hal. Hal, yeah.
Hal. I don't remember your last name.
It's really narrow, but I've changed that a long time ago.
Oh, is presented. We didn't have a motion and we've done all this discussion. So now we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry. What are we actually voting on?
The agenda called for discussion and possible action regarding the purchase of the Pigler Hill property.
So what action are we taking?
I made a motion that we take action regarding the purchase of the Pigler Hill property with regard to the LOI that Hal has presented to the mayor. Is that correct?
Aren't we authorizing Mayor Bass to enter into an LOI with the prospective buyers for the purchase price of 1.6 million dollars?
Well, he hasn't said that yet.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I heard that number somewhere.
1.6 million?
Right.
Which is the price you had on it?
And you do have, yes, you said that, and that's the price we had a while ago. But you do have the document from...
It's right here.
Okay. So that's what it is, Peter.
We have an LOI?
Yes.
For the back property, the rental area that...
We're careful with that.
We've had, the first one is we were negotiating for a while. This new one was just sent to me on Friday.
Okay.
So we want to give the mayor the opportunity...
We just didn't have it signed with them until...
Right, it wasn't fully executed.
Yes.
We want to, we're just going to move forward to give the mayor the opportunity to go forward with the LOI and see what's there. But it's only the back, that we'll call the back.
Absolutely.
We're not going to negotiate the front piece?
No. So we didn't...
Well, I'm reading it as here. Yes, it's negotiate.
Okay.
How's that for the action? Is to negotiate?
The LOI.
I'm a little bit confused here. Negotiate? What are we going to negotiate?
We're giving people information to negotiate.
Negotiate what? Price?
The LOI.
Everything in the LOI.
Correct.
Could you also have that sent to us, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Abstained.
Good tires.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hal.
Thank you.
I have 16...
Do you want to vote for the LOI first?
So...
Never mind.
I thought we just had a vote.
I know, but hold on. It's 10, 20, whatever.
It's 20, I think.
I got to tell you, these long meetings have got to stop. And I'm going to move that we continue this meeting tomorrow night.
Nope, can't be here. Not at the time of the term.
Well, then I move that we extend the meeting to 10:45.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed!
The old man is coming.
All right, let's move.
Next is the consent calendar. Would you help us?
That's right.
In the process.
We're all still backed up from...
Before I make a motion, I just want to ask everybody at this council, do you know what a consent calendar is?
No.
No. That's what Terry Grant is going to talk about.
It's actually, well, the good news is, is that you can operate with a consent calendar in your current rules. You don't need to change them. So a consent calendar is covered by Section 41 of Robert's Rules of Parliament, procedure, the most recent version. And it's basically what the body considers to be routine items to be put in that are on everything, like, for example, gifts or the tax refunds or the things that you're being apprised of by certain department heads that we don't have a presentation on. That can all go in the consent calendar and also be approved in one motion. And if there's an item that a member or two want discussed individually, they can have, use, invoke a privilege to remove that item from the consent calendar and discuss it individually. Many boards of heads operate this way. Many boards of selectmen, which is your functional equivalent, operate this way. But you do have the means within your current rules with the reference to Robert's Rules to include.
So my question is, if we were to adopt this, nothing changes as far as the agenda. All the items are there. And any council person can choose to opt out of the consent for that item.
Right.
Even though we all said it was nice about the tree worth $1,100, but if somebody wanted to call it up, they could take it out of that and we deal with it individually. Is that correct?
That is correct. Sorry, I was continuing the explanation.
A week ago, Friday, I was in the mayor's office. This is how this came to be on the agenda. And the mayor had asked me to come and talk about a few things, and one was the length of the meetings. And I said, from my experiences being a delegate to the American Del Association, a consent calendar is where every item is on. Because you couldn't go through every single item that they would discuss in every four days, maybe once a year. So if you took today's agenda and you said, well, on the consent to calendar, we could do...
Tax collector.
Bar planning grant, approve it. Possible action on changing the person's name, Melton, approve it. Town, the minutes could just be on the consent calendar. It could be automatically approved. If you had an issue with the minutes, you could call ahead of time and say something, or not. Only takes one person to say, no, pull that off the consent calendar. I want to discuss it. The park and rec thing could have been put on it.
The stuff that are automatically, we're all going to say yes.
The personnel issue, the tax collector, all these things can be on a consent calendar.
And if I say no, I want to talk about that stuff.
One person.
Yep.
They're, pull it off. I just need to make the caveat because after Dr. Martin came in to discuss that, I did some research. There are certain things that by statute could not go on the consent calendar. There's certain things that the council does have an obligation to take up and...
And you would tell us what those were?
What?
And you would let us know what those were.
Of course, but so, as I said, you don't need to change the rules if this, some of the council thinks it's a good idea. It's within the mayor's prerogative under the current rules to put up a consent calendar.
Cool. So we have to vote either for...
I make a move, I make a motion that we amend our town council rules and procedures.
You don't need to.
You don't, you don't, you don't mean you did earlier today, Matt?
No, no, no. Well, no, what I said, here's what I said. So you could, you could make a rule if you want the consent calendar to contain certain things. Like, for example, if the council decides we only want minutes, tax refunds and gifts on the consent calendar.
So we don't need to make a motion. We don't need to vote on this.
We can have it now.
So we're good.
We're all set.
All right, next, reports and presentation materials.
Right. So...
The first, we've got to type though on item 7. There's a word left out of line 3 from the bottom.
On the council, on the rules and procedures?
Yeah.
Well, it's been there since December and I didn't type it, so.
I just wrote, because I stoned in on the, yes, we could reconvene the next evening at 7:00 o'clock after you guys shut me down.
It could.
Just saying. It was there. However, the town council should not recess until the members of, I think the public. But there's something missing there. The members of, the have fully exercised. So I don't know if the word's missing there, but there's a word missing.
Till the members of the council have fully exercised their right. Oh, that's right. No, it does say, oh, yes, that's to address us. So...
Okay.
Well, that's what we allow as a comment.
We can call it scripter's error if you like and we'll fix it.
So you want to table this until it's correct?
No, I'm fine. I just want that.
We can call it scripter's error. We know what it means.
All right. So we're going to make a motion to accept the town council rules and procedures as they pertain to reports.
With correction to item 7.
Presentation materials per the correction for item 7.
Second.
Wait a minute.
Not much.
Okay. Hold on a second. Number 15?
Oh, hold on.
Yep.
No, that's not, we didn't agree to that. That got pulled out. We tried it, and nobody agreed to that last time. That's not right.
No way.
We did pull it out.
What is it? Where are we at?
It's about attending the meeting by phone or...
I remember that conversation vividly. It went on a long time.
Yes, absolutely. That's why I wondered why I was there, and nobody said anything.
You got to respect this, and maybe this is the correct copy.
I don't know what the source of this talking was.
I think someone copied the wrong policies and procedures.
I would table it.
So we're going to remove item 15 altogether.
No, table, table until...
Table it?
Yeah.
Okay, so I withdraw my motion. Second person, you want to withdraw?
Okay.
Will you withdraw?
I will withdraw the second.
Thank you. All right.
I will withdraw 15.
Okay, item 16-6, update on land...
16-4.
We just did that. It's withdrawn. Item five is...
No, no, no. We did three, when you consent calendar.
It's done. We just, we just withdrew it. I just withdrew it, and he withdrew his.
Okay.
And now, number five is not on the table. That's been removed.
Yep, it's been removed.
And the landfill sentiment fund, the mayor is going to give us an update?
Yep, just very quickly.
I know.
So, right now, currently, we have in the waste management fund, which would include the STIF waste management investment, Janey May Waste Management Investment, we have $10,412,161.6. We will be receiving $2.7 million on October 1st for the waste management, which would give us a total of $13.1 million. Just real quickly, we continue, there was the previous finance director, as we talked about before, did some ladder investments on some bond holdings. So Greg, when he can, when the ladders do come due, he does pull them out. So we've been able to take $200,000 out and actually put it into the STIF account, which adds up this coming week will be at 2.7 percent. He'll get on that. That'll be some extra investment. So I just want to apprise the council on that.
Thank you.
Next, recycling center subcommittee on their fees.
Item 17, motion to authorize the town council to implement a system of weighing MSW and charging by weight. You have a chart that was provided to us. Per that chart, that's the motion? Second?
Second. Any discussion?
Any reason why we're 50 cents lower than Brookfield Sherman?
Mr. Hannah?
I don't mean to ruin your night, Bob.
No, that's fine.
Woke him up? I'll swing by tomorrow and talk to you.
When Tom Milford initially started having Brookfield Sherman participate in our recycling center, there was a feeling back in the day that those residents should not get the same cost benefits that we have.
So they pay 50 cents more.
So they pay 50 cents more, and that's reflected in the increases.
That's a great idea, Bob. Thank you.
Isn't it?
I don't think it's such a great idea.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next is Housatonic Valley Association.
Figure it here for something.
My name's Courtney Morehouse. I'm with the Housatonic Valley Association. And we've been, for the past few years, working on Still River watershed plan. And right now, we're in the, we're in the mode of presenting the existing conditions report, which is basically the second step in a six-part watershed planning process. We've been working with towns throughout the entire watershed, including New Milford, specifically James Furlough and Mike Zarba, who've been on our Still River Partners Group to basically restore the Still River. So Still River starts in Danbury, kind of runs through Danbury, and then up through Brookfield, and it empties out into the Housatonic in New Milford. So you have the main stem that goes through your town. And that main stem is what's considered 303D listed. In other words, it's impaired for aquatic life and recreational use. In fact, the entire main stem of the still is impaired for recreation at least, and in a lot of parts, aquatic life. So that's what the pink lines are. And then the dotted line is where it's impaired for aquatic life as well. So the solid pink is recreation, and then the double pink, and spotted pink is aquatic as well. Basically, when Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection lists something as impaired, the next step is to put what's called a total maximum daily load onto it. So that's basically just a pollution diet that says, here are the things that we're concerned about, and here's the level we want them to be at, and have that be regularly tested. So the entire still watershed is, has a TMDL for E. coli, which is an indicator bacteria. E. coli is not harmful in and of itself, but it does indicate whether there's raw sewage, or any sort of impairments, high nitrogen, phosphorus, et cetera, in the still. So that's the, that's the TMDL they've set. The average for the entire still is a 70% reduction. In New Milford in particular, there's two monitoring sites for that E. coli TMDL. The one is, calls for a 52% reduction, and that's kind of near Lover's Leap. It's kind of at the, towards the mouth of the actual Still River. And then the other is a 76% reduction, and that's kind of just north of the Candlewood Golf Course. So those are the two monitoring sites that you have in your, in your town. The biggest, the biggest problem is non-point source pollution. So the Clean Water Act of 1972 got rid of a lot of, or clamped down on a lot of point source pollution, that is, any pollution that comes into bodies of water from a specific factory, industry, et cetera, that you can pinpoint it's coming from there. Non-point source pollution is, in essence, stormwater runoff that's running over our roads, over rooftops, et cetera, and carrying with it oils, grasses, pesticides, herbicides, and all that kind of gets into our stormwater system and then goes in the river. So you can't really pinpoint any one place. And that's sort of the biggest problem that we have today with the Still River that's continuing to cause problems in water quality health, et cetera. So the way that that non-point source pollution is accelerated is through impervious cover. So that is any surface where water can't seep into the ground and then get filtered by soil and microorganisms, et cetera. It runs over like a rooftop or pavement, et cetera. That kind of intensifies both the pollution, it collects it all in one spot, usually goes into a storm drain, and then goes into the river. Or it can also increase the amount of flow, because everything's kind of getting concentrated. So it can help with the flood. So there's been an experimental TMDL that has no regulatory power whatsoever, but it's an experimental TMDL for impervious cover in the downtown Danbury area that reduces, that asks for a reduction of the impervious cover to less than 12%, which is when you start to see bad things happening to rivers, aquatic life, et cetera. So where are we at now? So in 2014, we formed the Still River Partners Group. That was the gathering of all the stakeholders, of which the town of New Milford has quite a few stakeholders in the group, which is great. We've gathered over 250 documents, and we've assessed over 30 miles of stream, including some section of the main stem here in New Milford, and a couple of small tribes that we sort of thought might have bigger impacts in your town. And we've put together the existing conditions reports. And now we're doing outreach to the public about what we find. So the existing conditions report is basically, it's a snapshot, what is the health of the river today, why is that health the way it is, and some of the history, et cetera. So it's a fairly lengthy document that we've summarized into a four-pager that we've handed out to you. So if you want to save some time, read the four-pager. You'll get the highlights. And then, as a part of the process of walking the tribes, we've started to identify restoration projects, and we've formed a couple of programs on those restoration projects. The biggest one is what we call Connections, Still River Watershed Connections. It's a youth program that connects high school-aged youth with restoration projects throughout the still. You actually have two in your town that we worked on this past year, and then one the year before that. Harrybrook Boat Portage, so we're looking at putting in a boat portage around the falls at Harrybrook, so that you can bring people to the river again, increase the recreation there. And then the other one we worked in, New Milford, was the Still River Preserve. We did a bunch of invasive removal with Danbury Youth Services internships. So we brought kids out to the river, removed a bunch of barberry, increased the biodiversity in that area. So that was, that was another one. So that's the Connections program. And the other program that we started to work on is a recreational program, where we're looking to do a greenway along the Still River, connecting the Danbury section, they have about a mile in the Commerce Park down in Danbury, and then the Brookfield section, and then extending that to the mouth. So one large ADA-accessible, 10-foot-wide path, greenway throughout the entire. And then that mirrors what we're going to call the Still River Water Trail, which is basically connecting the entire river from paddlers. So making it so that you can go from the Commerce Park in Danbury all the way up to the mouth of the Housatonic, and then go past Housatonic into Lake Villano. So having a lengthy recreational opportunity as well. Sort of a way to bring people out to the river and then have them care about the river, so that we can restore the river, get some public support around that. So I'm going to wrap it up now, because I know we're all short on time. So we have the handout. The link to the report as a full, and also the specific section that you all cover, is at stillriverwatershed.org. And that's also where the public can make comments. So right now, we have public comments open. And after we get all the public comments, we will incorporate it into the ECR, or the existing petitions report, do a final one, and then we'll move on to vision and goals for the watershed plan. And then in a year, we'll be back in front of you, presenting the watershed plan that we hope to get everybody's public support on, so that we can restore the river, which, as the recipient of all the water that comes through the still, you guys will know whether the river's healthy or not through the end of it.
I have a really quick question.
Yeah.
How many people, like yourself, are doing this?
Doing which part exactly?
Working on the Still River, the watershed.
So there's about 40 Still River Partners, and I would say, we had four volunteers, and then I mostly wrote the thing.
That's what I thought. Thanks very much.
Yeah.
I'm really sorry you had to wait so long.
No, no, it's all right.
Thank you for the brochure.
Is there anything, anything that we can do to help, that basically, you know, from our holy pulpit?
Get the word out. We would love to, so there's two things that we would love to have. One, we just want people to know that we're doing this plan, and to get people familiar with the plight, if you will, of the Still River. And also get people commenting on the ECR report, even if it's them looking at that fact sheet that you all have and saying, I had no idea this was happening. It'd be great to just have people aware. But then the other thing is, if you all know of restoration projects that are town priorities, it'd be good for us to know. Let us know. Send me a email, et cetera, because then we can write that into the watershed plan, and we can use that to raise funding for the restoration opportunities. So that would be a huge thing.
To me, your greenway kind of ties into a bike trail.
Yeah, yeah. And the, the person, the gentleman who is part of the commission is on, is part of the Still River Partners Group.
Tom?
I believe so. I don't, I'm not sure.
That's okay. We'll sit down.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Your patience to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Action.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
I was going to come back tomorrow to...